Welcome to City Moderator, City Council's special meeting on the Meadows Project. Madam City Clerk, would you please be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor Jean Goss.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Rachel Erzmeni.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmember Rachel Erzmeni will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure, if you can please stand. Put your hand on your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, let's take first look at our agenda tonight. And I would like to, in addition to your review of the agenda, I would like a motion amending the agenda to allow for report out a closed session immediately after mayor and city council reports.
Move to approve the agenda with the amendment to report out for closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And let's do mayor and city council reports.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report at this time.
Well, this is gonna be easy.
Yeah, no report, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No report.
Okay, well, I have a short one, very brief. I know there's significant interest among our residents in the Canyon about the problems with the power outages during the extreme heat wave we just went through. Today, I spoke with Jeanette Soriano from Southern California Edison with regards to those issues. They are now referring to that problem as a quote "load balance issue" close quote. She will be appearing here before our city council on the night of the October 25th to address the issue. And she'll have the Edison District Manager with her, who is very steeped in the technical side of this. And he will address the cause of the recent outage, what needs to be done, as well as what has already been done to solve the problem. So if you're one of those affected residents, mark that down on your calendar, might be a good meeting you want to attend or at least watch on Channel 3. And that concludes my report. So we will move on to report out a closed session from our city attorney.
Mayor, the city council met in closed session to discuss anticipated litigation. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I wanted to just make a quick comment about public comment tonight. Because this is a special meeting, we will not have comment on non-agenda items. All public comments will be addressed to agenda items as we address those agenda items as the meeting unfolds. So usually, we would start the meeting with a discussion or a public comment on non-agenda items. We will not do that tonight. And what I wanted to just remind you of is this is likely to be a late meeting and it's likely to be a we're likely to have a lot of public comments. So when we do have public comments tonight, we're going to watch it real closely with a three-minute limit on anyone who participates. And about two minutes and 45 seconds in, I'm gonna give you a reminder that you have 15 seconds to complete your comment because as important as you all are, nobody's more important than anyone else. And we want to make sure everyone gets their fair chance to be heard. So that's my approach to this meeting tonight. Having said that, I think we will begin with the public hearing now. And I would like staff, Director Gonzalez, to begin with his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this evening, we are beginning the first public hearing for the Meadows Bailey Canyon Project. We do have the project team on hand, represented by both the Retreat Center, New Urban West, and their technical team of experts. Today's staff presentation will consist of a presentation by the Planning Director, City Attorney, and then actually, we're gonna follow a final presentation by New Urban West. So we're taking a little bit out of order. Then we'll answer any questions from the city council and then open the matter up for public comment. And then we'll continue with city council deliberations. So there's been some discussion in the past with the Planning Commission whether or not the topics that we're addressing this evening are required to be handled within the five-hearing limit pursuant to SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act. And because these are legislative decisions, there is not a limit on the public hearings. And that's the same reason why we ended up holding six public hearings before the Planning Commission. Now, the Phase 2 proceedings, which consists of design review permit and tentative track map, those are quasi-judicial decisions and they are limited to the five-hearing rule. So this evening, the council will deliberate upon Phase 1 proceedings pursuant to Resolution 2258, which is certification of the final EIR, adoption of SEQA findings of fact, adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program, amending the general plan and land use map, and approving the lot line adjustment, and pursuant to ordinance 1461 to amend the zoning code and zoning map, the specific plan, and the development agreement. So a brief project description, looking at the parcels from the north to the south. There are three parcels to be conserved as open space, including, highlighted in orange, a new legal lot for restricted use area and rezone to open space. The Retreat Center will continue their operations. And in the lower portion of the property is the 17.2 acre or 17.3 acre parcel, which will consist of 42 residential homes, three-acre park. And some of the community benefits is the net-zero water strategies, solar on all houses, as well as electric appliance options and Carter roadway improvements. At the beginning of this project, we want to ensure that we did were as transparent and responsive to the public as possible. We established a transparency portal. Our documents are posted there, the environmental documents, our presentations. We also had, at the release of the draft environmental impact report, there was a community outcry for an extended period of public comment from 45 days. The city extended that public comment to 64 days. We did receive 118 comments. Those comments are included in the response to comments in the final environmental impact report. And we've also responded to over 37 public records requests during this period and producing well over 1,000 records. We also conducted community engagement via scoping sessions. This, again, was at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. These meetings were held outdoors. The first series shown here occurred in our tennis courts. And then we also conducted a Zoom meeting. So we had three scoping sessions outdoors, varying times to limit capacity, followed by Zoom meeting. And then in July, we held another scoping session at the Memorial Park. As you can see here, we did hold over 18 public engagement opportunities, again, consisting of the scoping sessions, a joint study session with city council. The Planning Commission also held a number of study sessions regarding key issues that we heard from, were of concern and interest from the public. And now we're presenting before the city council. And just to mention again, we did hold six public hearings before the Planning Commission. Those key issue or discussion topics held before the Planning Commission included water supply. Jose Reynoso, city manager, presented, was moderating that discussion. And he talked about water use strategies to achieve net-zero water impact. Drought-tolerant native landscaping would be utilized as part of that issue to conserve water as well as compliance with our water-efficient landscape ordinance and utilizing high-efficiency fixtures to promote sustainability. Chief Bartlett, Fire Chief Bartlett, held a discussion regarding wildfire. And he explained to the public that the current, you know, current building of fire codes will be applied to this project. There were also, according to building code, all buildings will have to be fire sprinkled. And utilize ignition-resistant building materials, including fire-resistant landscaping and defensible landscape zones around the properties. That was followed by a discussion of traffic and circulation, highlighting the two methods of analysis used to determine the traffic impacts around the surrounding area. The required metric required by SEQA is vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. And we also looked at the level of service, or LOS, which analyzes the traffic impacts AMPM, traffic impacts around study intersections. Both of these studies found that there is no significant impact to the street services within the area. We concluded with a report regarding the arborists' analysis. So there were 11 onsite cost live oaks identified for removal. There was actually 14 onsite protected trees, oak trees. 105 total trees will be removed. Replacement trees, 493 are proposed at the project site, including the project park. And also, the applicant is going to be required to replace any of the protected trees utilizing the city mitigation matrix for tree replacement. A quick summary regarding the environmental impacts. I have two tables shown before you. The first table in shades of green are the studies that do not have any environmental impact or exceed environmental standards, and therefore, there's no mitigation. And the table in blue, those technical studies show that there's a less-than-significant impact after mitigation. To give you an example, if we pull out tribal cultural resources, for example, staff did meet with the Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians, the KIz Nation specifically. And they wanted to add four additional mitigation measures to the report. We've included those. And basically, those mitigation measures address concerns if any remnants, either artifacts or human remains are discovered during excavation, that excavation cease, they be contacted, or an archaeologist will be contacted. The items will be catalogued and removed. And then further monitoring of the site for further excavation will continue with an archaeologist present. So that's an example of additional mitigation measures that they were able to impose to make it less-than-significant. Under SEQA, we are required to evaluate other project alternatives. This project for alternatives were considered. Of course, on any project, it's typical that we'll have a no-build scenario, so there is no impact. Looking at the communal residential and the private school, these are alternatives that are allowed under the institutional zone. And both are representing 35% lot coverage and approximately 270,000 square feet of building area. The fourth alternative is a reduced development alternative. Instead of the 42 homes proposed, they reduce that to 34 homes with larger lots. And as a part of that, would not include a community park because there wouldn't be sufficient funds to maintain a community facilities district. So with a reduced project, the park will be omitted from that proposal. So looking at some of the actions that are before you this evening, of course, the first is to amend the general plan and land use map. Excuse me, I have two maps side by side. The first is the existing institutional zone. And the proposal, amending the general plan and the land use map, would segregate both the institutional zones specifically for the Metadale Rosa Retreat Center property. And the lower half would be zoned residential, low-density R1 zone with a specific plan. The next action is the lot line adjustment. So the map on the left is the current parcel, the current site with three parcels or three lots, Lot 1, 19, and 20. The lot line adjustment would create two parcels, Parcel 1 and Parcel 2, as illustrated on the map on the right. The next action is the zoning code and zoning map amendment. Again, the existing zoning designation is institutional. The amendment would create both an institutional zone as well as an R1 family residential and specific plan. The specific plan provided is reviewed, was reviewed by the Planning Commission. They had numerous edits, which we will also look and see what some of the major topics of concern were. So this is really a short list of some of the more significant edits made by the commission. One of them was, the number one is to adopt the R1 definition of floor area. The original proposal deviated from that. And they also reduced the maximum floor area to 3,775 square feet in response to utilizing the definition of floor area and utilizing the R1 standards. The developer also committed to a 25, 35, 40 unit mix. 25 being, 25% of the units would be one-story. 35% would be two-story. And the 40% would be two-story, but at the, up to 3,735 square feet. Also, the Planning Commission wanted to know the exact location of both the one- and two-story homes on the site plan, which we'll take a look at. We also will, they wanted to provide two points of ingress and egress. They thought that was very important for the project to distribute traffic flow through the project. So that would be both through Sunnyside as well as an improved Carter roadway or a new street. And also to provide two options for Carter sidewalk improvements. So those options are both shown in the specific plan, and I have an exhibit to reflect that. And also to establish a new third legal lot, which I had mentioned, to be preserved as open space. This would be on the Metadale Rosa property itself, immediately behind their northernmost building. And that would be actually subdivided during the tentative track map phase of the project. So that's not inclusive of the lot line adjustment here. So some of the changes to the site plan, I didn't show the original, but the Planning Commission wanted to introduce some curvature to streets A, B, and C. There was also a determination made to make each of those three streets, A, B, and C, of equal width. And the exhibit on the right actually is a plotting plan of both the single-story and two-story homes. The single-story homes represented with a orange footprint. And then you'll see the overlay in turquoise on top of that orange footprint if it's a second story. The developer also wanted to reduce the massing as you're traveling up those north-south streets. So all the homes on streets A, B, and C at the very ends are all single-story. The Planning Commission reviewed conceptual elevations. But they also wanted to see, they only reviewed the street-facing elevation, but they wanted to see all elevations for each of the variations in design. So what we're looking at here is a single-story modern elevation from top to bottom, looking at from front, side-to-side, and rear elevations. And the same would be for the single-story contemporary Spanish. And the two-story modern, two-story craftsman design and contemporary farmhouse in two-story variety. There'll be 16 variations in color and 12 different building elevations. The no-building elevation will be repeated on the streets A, B, and C. So it will look as a unique street as you're driving through those sites. The southern end of the park is the provided here in this view as a conceptual park plan. The park is approximately three acres, and it's designed for passive uses. And it will comply with our city's dark sky general plan objectives. There's also a direct connection to Bailey Canyon Park that you see on the far right. Planning Commission did have discussion to limit the parking lot that you see on the far right of that site to only include accessible parking spaces. They eliminated the parking spaces for general use. There was additional amendments to the site plan that all parking, and I'll back up, I would have to back up too many slides, but all the parking will be on streets A, B, and C will be placed at the northern side of the street. So that will capture more parking spaces that patrons of the park or Bailey Canyon Wilderness Park can utilize for parking. So it enhances the overall parking opportunity for those two sites. And this is a closer view of the elimination of the parking and just providing the accessible parking spaces. There was also some discussion regarding the interface of the park to the residences immediately to the south edge. Originally proposed was an 18-foot-wide buffer, as shown as a berm between the residence and the park. The original proposal included trees. There was some concern that the trees, concern from residents that the trees would block views of the mountains to the north. And the plan was revised to eliminate the trees and just include low shrubbery to provide that buffer between the house and the park. An additional discussion of interest with the community and as well as the Planning Commission was the creation of a community facilities district. The original plan that you see on the left that was presented to the Planning Commission limited the community facilities district to the park space itself, shown in red. And the, there's also a buffer to the north that remains, that's highlighted in blue and now incorporated to the right. That's just a buffer between the monastery and the project development to try to retain as much privacy for both parties as possible. The area in green on the image of the left is a homeowners' association. Those lots actually go through that homeowner association parcels that you see in green. It's actually on private property. So the parcels go from street to street. The Planning Commission requested or recommended that the city maintain the entirety of the project site, including eliminating the homeowner association parcels and in making, including that in its totality, a community facilities district to be maintained by the city. Staff is, including public work staff, is saying that they would prefer the original option and only be responsible for the park space. So that will be under discussion by the city council to make that determination. Offsite improvements include the Carter roadway. Currently, there is a parcel immediately to the south of this, where you see the sidewalk highlighted in red. That parcel goes up to Grove Street and immediately south of that red indication. So it's not part of the Carter roadway that you see to the right and going over to Oak Crest. So the proposal is to utilize that city parcel and incorporate that into the roadway. That would have to be through approved by council resolution to include it as a roadway. New Urban West is also working with Los Angeles County Public Works to acquire some area in the Bailey Canyon Wilderness Park adjacent to include a widening of the road as well as for the sidewalk area. And there's two options for the sidewalk. So just to give you an example, what's shown is actually in that section that you see is a 34-foot-wide roadway. It has two travel lanes of 12 feet each with a six-foot sidewalk depicted in red on the north side of that roadway. The Planning Commission had decided that they would like to see two options incorporated into the specific plan. So what you're seeing is in beige, the sidewalk that we saw, highlighted in red outline, and a second option in fuchsia, which will bypass and go around a number of cypress trees. These are non-protected trees. And the rest of the diadors that are represented on this slide in yellow triangles are all retained. So all the trees on the, in yellow will be retained. The cluster of trees to the far left are proposed to be removed in this scenario. The additional scenario that has that curvature will also be an ADA-accessible sidewalk, but will retain those trees. And if you don't have any questions from yet this time, or if you would like, we can answer questions all at once after the applicant makes. can answer questions all at once after the applicant makes his presentation, I'll hand it over to city attorney.
I'm assuming we're gonna do it all at once, but I'm open to my colleagues' views on that.
All at once?
All at once? It's gonna be all at once?
Counsel, unlike the MOU, this development agreement is a three-party agreement. And the three parties in this case are the City of Sierra Madre, New East Sierra Madre LLC, which is the developer, and the Congregation of La Passion, which is a landowner. Each party has certain obligations under this agreement. These obligations listed here are just a summary of what's in the development agreement. I won't, I won't go into them in detail. One of the obligations on the developer that was required per the MOU was the obligation that they, that they make the project net zero with respect to water. In this case, net zero water are strategies that are intended to create a water-neutral development, where the amount of supplemental water purchased and stored and the amount of water offset by water-efficient improvements are equal to the development's total impact to the city's water system. For this purpose, the developer has agreed to put forward between $910,000 and $983,000. Here we have listed as option A and option B, different uses of this water. One use can be to purchase it to replenish the water in the San Gabriel, in the basin. Another option available to the city is to use that, use a certain portion of those funds to implement a program of placing existing lawns of residential units with drought-tolerant landscaping. And the third option is that those funds can be expended to replace leaky pipes. I'll note, this is actually an older slide. The, you see certain ranges here. You can disregard those ranges because that $910,000 to $983,000 can be used for any of those purposes at the council's discretion, and it doesn't have to be in any specific order. And that was an amendment made by the planning commission. With respect to electrification, the developer would promote all electric utilities to encourage a model of development in the city that reduces residents' greenhouse gas emissions. Some examples include utility upgrades to allow electric appliances. Model homes would be all-electric, onsite signage promoting all-electric appliances, each home would be Energy Star certified, and development of website video and pamphlets promoting all-electric utilities. The planning commission recommended approval of this project unanimously, subject to a number of conditions, a number of amendments to the development agreement, rather. The first major amendment is this new concept called the Retreat Center Open Space. So in the original version of the development agreement, it just talked about open, open space, and open space referred to the two parcels above the, the parcel owned by the monastery. Under the new terms of this development agreement, about 20 acres, I believe it's about 20 acres, above where the current Retreat Center is, which has some, has some land that's not developable, but also has some land that is developable, will be converted into the Retreat Center Open Space. So the lot will be subdivided at a later time. The northernmost portion will have a zone change to open space. During the subdivision, there'll be a lot tie between those two lots, so they can't be sold separately. And the congregation shall apply for that rezone to convert the Retreat Center Open Space parcel from institutional to open space. After, this is all happening after the, this phase of the project. It'll happen in the second phase, which, which is, which includes a tentative tract map and the design review permits, and a conservation easement will be recorded over this property. Another amendment that was added to the development agreement was with respect to what a default is and what a delay is. So just quickly, a default under this agreement is essentially a breach of the agreement, whereas a permitted delay is, is not considered a breach. Or rather, it's, it's a delay that's contemplated by the agreement and will continue for a certain period of time as determined by the city manager. And once that period of time has elapsed, then it will be converted into a default. So in that first bullet here, it says, "If developer defaults on its obligations, it cannot be issued a tentative tract map, a design review permit, a building permit, or a certificate of occupancy." Essentially, if there's a, if there is an outstanding default, the project is, is going to be stalled, and the developer cannot move forward with this project unless they correct these defaults. The second bullet says, "A determination default is governed by Section 12 of the, of the development agreement. A determination of a permitted delay is governed by Section 13." And again, the city manager is the one that determines whether something is a default or a delay, and gets to determine the length of that delay. With respect to the public park design, members of the community wanted the ability to comment on what the public park is going to look like. And the planning commission didn't want to make that decision ahead of time, but felt that the Community Services Commission is the more appropriate body to make that determination because they deal with parks. So with respect to public park design, the developer will submit a site plan and planting plan and a plan for conceptual amenities within 18 months after approval of the tentative tract map. And that, and those documents will be reviewed by the Community Services Commission in a public hearing that will be noticed to all residents within a 300-foot radius, and the Community Services Commission is going to render a recommendation. That's going to be a mandatory recommendation. It's gonna be binding on the developer, and they're gonna have to follow what's in the specific plan, as well as they're gonna have to follow what, what the Community Services recommendation is. Members of the public and the developer can choose to appeal that recommendation to the city council if they're unhappy with it, and they're gonna have to follow the statutory procedures for an appeal under our municipal code. And once the public park is dedicated within 60 days after the city's issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the 22nd unit to the city, so a certain number of units must be constructed first, so that there's sufficient, there's a sufficient pool of funds available to support that park. And once we figure 22 units have been developed, there's going to be enough sufficient funds to preliminarily support that park until the rest are constructed. Then the developer turns that park over to the city, and with all the improvements, it's gonna be a turnkey park, and those turnkey public improvements will be warranted for a period of two years. And that was changed from 90 to, 90 days to, to two years. Construction of off-site improvements, this was also a major sticking point for the planning commission. The developer must first acquire rights to off-site improvements of Carter Avenue from Los Angeles County within 24 months after the effective date of this development agreement. If acquired, the developer will enter into an improvement agreement with the city. The construction must commence before issuance of the first building permit. The construction for these off-site improvements must be completed prior to the issuance of the 11th building permit. So between the first and 11th building permit, there's only, there's only going to be one mode of ingress and egress. By the 11th, construction of the 11th home, there should be two. If not acquired, the city and the developer must renegotiate the terms of the development agreement. So if, if the developer is unable to acquire those rights from Los Angeles County, is unable to provide for two methods of ingress and egress, the developer must come back before the city council to, to determine an alternative method. Failure to obtain rights to off-site improvements is considered a permitted delay, so it's not considered a default. Because in this case, it's not so much the developer's fault as it is, we don't know what Los Angeles County is going to do. So for that reason, if they're unable to get the rights they need to acquire, they're gonna have a permitted delay. That permitted delay will expire pursuant to a deadline set by the city manager, and if they're unable to negotiate an alternative within that period of time, then the, the agreement may be terminated. There was some concern regarding what a minor modification to the development agreement would look like. Keep in mind, there are two separate types of minor modifications. There are minor modifications to the specific plan, and there are minor modifications to the development agreement. Minor modifications may be made to this agreement, meaning the development agreement, pursuant to, there's a specific section, or to the project pursuant to Section 6.4 of the specific plan, that are in accordance with the city development regulations and any improved entitlements that do not modify provisions, and here's the important part, affecting timing, performance, or value. These are the three things that cannot be amended with a minor modification, meaning, and I'll, and I'll go through what the processes for a minor modification, but it can't be done at the staff level. If there's an amendment to timing, performance, or value, it needs to come back before the With respect to noticing these modifications and amendments, developer must first submit an application for a minor modification or a major modification, which is essentially an amendment to the development agreement, to the Director of Planning and Community Preservation. The director provides notice of the application to the city council, to the planning commission, and the city manager. The director will recommend an action, and the city manager will, and the city manager is charged with reviewing minor modifications administratively, and the city council is going to be charged with reviewing major modifications, again, which are essentially amendments to the development agreement or amendments to the specific plan, as part of a properly noticed public hearing. If the city council would like, at a later time, we can also review Schedule I, the development agreement. Schedule I lists sequentially what the responsibilities are of all the different parties, and so the council can know essentially what the timeline would be for this project going forward. That's something that, if the city council would like, we can look at later. One amendment I'd like to make to the development agreement, which was an earlier oversight, and is it possible to pull up the development agreement management, Alice Carlson? It's, it's a minor consistency error that was discovered after publication of the agenda So this is Schedule I, if we could pull up the development agreement. Perfect. And if we could go to Section 10 of the development agreement regarding termination? I believe it's page 17. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Go further up, 10. My, my page count is different. Section 10? This is a clean version. Section 10, scroll down. There we are. So 10A currently states expiration of the 10-year term. That should be seven-year term. The planning commission amended the term of the contract to be from 10 years to seven because they wanted to ensure that this project was developed sooner. And that's the only amendment I have to the development agreement. I'll turn it back over to the director.
So we're gonna have to queue up the next, the presentation that we just went through. Just talked about the alternatives before the city council this evening, and also the staff for the planning commission recommendation. Why don't we go ahead and go through the PowerPoint presentation for New Urban West?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Gonzalez. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Jonathan Frankel on behalf of New Urban West, and it's my great pleasure to be with you this evening. Thank you. To present the Meadows Project for your consideration. Before I begin, just a quick note, just want to give my, express my thanks to Director Gonzalez and Senior Planner Lynn for their diligent work in processing these applications. Obviously, as you can tell, tremendous amount of work was done, and we're very grateful for their efforts. New Urban West has been building homes in Southern California for, for nearly 70 years. And during this time, we have welcomed thousands of new families into homes where they grow and thrive. Some examples of the homes that we built are here on this slide in varying styles and kind of throughout the region, and we're, we're very proud of our contribution to these communities and providing opportunities for, and spaces for people to contribute to their communities. We focus on creating thoughtful, high-quality design with attention to those key details that result in not only great homes but great places, places where people enjoy being and living. But building a, a great new neighborhood is really only possible through robust engagement with the local community. And so in addition to all of the outreach that Director Gonzalez mentioned that occurred on behalf of the city, we also conducted our own outreach with the local Sierra Madre community. Over two years to key stakeholders, area residents, business owners, civic organizations, including Kiwanis Club, Community Foundation, Historic Preservation Society, amongst others, we met at many kitchen tables to discuss the project, to discuss comments, concerns, and how we will make this a better project. As you know, this project serves to implement the MOU that was approved unanimously by a previous council in 2020. And the MOU recognized what we believe is a very important point, that a new neighborhood of single-family homes alongside a three-acre public park, over 40 acres of hillside open space, is more beneficial and less impactful than an alternative project that could be built today under institutional zoning. About 275,000 square feet of institutional space could be built at the monastery site today, and we didn't think that made sense. Meta de la Rosa didn't think that made sense, and the Meadows Project reflects that, and so did the MOU. So the Meadows, a specific plan and development agreement before you today reflects six months of detailed analysis and revision by the city's planning commission, as Director Gonzalez mentioned. I mean, in making their comments and changes to the specific plan, the planning commission heard over five hours of testimony from members of the public. There was over 20 hours of deliberation and modification to the project. And after this careful consideration, we are extremely proud and grateful to have received the unanimous support of the commission. Director Gonzalez did a fantastic job of noting many of the changes that were made. There were, there were dozens of them, including substantially reducing the size of the proposed homes, securing over seven acres of additional open space conservation area, the guaranteeing a diverse mix of sizes, floor plans, and architecture, increasing parking, providing a public park design process, and adding additional water-saving features into the proposed park, namely capturing all of the stormwater generated onsite and infiltrating that in, back into our local offer for, for the supporting conservation efforts in the And as a result of these changes, we firmly believe the project before you tonight is consistent with the surrounding community and also offers real community benefits that are vastly better than in a large institutional project. We're particularly excited and have been working diligently with our team on the opportunity to create a brand-new three-acre public park. This, this park will have some of the most scenic vistas in the city. It's really a spectacular location for a passive park space, and we really look forward to continuing the dialogue with the city, the Community Services Commission, and the public on how to deliver a public park that truly adds value to the neighborhood and to Sierra Madre. As you're aware, all the costs associated with the construction, operation, and maintenance of this new park space will be borne solely by the Meadows residents at no cost to the city or the general fund. As I mentioned, the 42 acres of hillside open space will remain protected under the Meadows development. Meta de la Rosa has, in our view, been extremely generous. This acreage represents over 50% of their existing property that they are placing into conservation. And in our experience as a business, we have, we have never seen a conservation effort like this as part of one individual project, and we're very grateful for Meta de la Rosa and their willingness to collaborate on this. The specific plan and development agreement, as City Attorney Girigosian mentioned, require Carter Avenue to be widened to accommodate two travel lanes. Carter Avenue to be widened to accommodate two travel lanes in each direction as well as a sidewalk. And these improvements were made in response to public comments on the EIR, and we're very pleased that that process worked as it should. The draft was circulated for public comment, they expressed their concerns, and we responded accordingly with additional improvements. We've held three meetings with Los Angeles County to date, and regularly, as a firm, acquire right-of-way for off-site improvements. It's a very typical part of any project, and we look forward to continuing those discussions to deliver these off-site improvements very early in the process, as City Attorney mentioned, prior to the 11th home being constructed. Next, the investments in sustainability. Net-zero water payments obviously will help secure additional water supplies, retrofit aging infrastructure, remove water-wasting lawns. It's very important. Native and drought-tolerant landscape will minimize outdoor water use. Low-flow fixtures, gray water systems will further maximize our conservation efforts within the project. As you know, all homes will feature solar systems, and homebuyers will have the option of choosing 100% electric home, and we are going to encourage them to do that. All model homes will be 100% electric. We understand the necessity to reduce, for all of us, to reduce our carbon footprint and support important climate action goals. Thank you again, council, for your consideration and your, I know there's a lot of information, over 1,000 pages of environmental analysis. We're truly grateful for your consideration. Our entire project team is here this evening, should you have any questions, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Does that conclude the report?
That concludes the staff presentation, yes.
Okay, great. So I'd like to begin council questioning, and I think, and I'm open to, you know, procedure on this. We could kind of pick and choose whatever we came ready to question. We could do this systematically, starting with, you know, EIR and going down in numerical sequence. You folks care? How about just doing it generally? We brought our major concerns. Is that okay? Okay. Who wants to go first? Thanks, Councilmember Parkers, please.
So I've got, I'm happy to pause. I have a number of questions, so if we want to take a break, so be conscious of that. One small question on Carter outside the park. Is there going to be any parking on that street, or is it just going to be on Streets A, B, and C?
There will not be parking on the Carter roadway expansion.
And will that be, so there's the expansion, but there's the existing road that kind of comes in, so...
Yes, there will be parking on the existing north-south road, which would be called, which is referenced as Carter Avenue.
So how far, so is it past where the gate is now, there'll be no parking, and then above the gate, next to the park, is there parking? Can you help me understand that?
There's parking on the entire length of that north-south street, as well as on the north side of Streets A, B, and C. So the entire street will have parking.
Okay.
I don't want to break procedure, but I think it's, because we're...
That's fine.
Hold it up, go ahead.
Yeah, so we, what I heard, I had a similar question. What we heard was parking on north side of A, B, and C. What about onsite Carter and onsite Sunnyside? Are we talking east and west, or just one side of the street?
I would have to defer, I believe it's on the, on both sides of the street, on Sunnyside and Carter Avenue, the new Carter Avenue, if that's correct.
Slight correction, parking will be available on Carter on the west side of Carter, on the new, on the new Carter, not both sides, on the west side.
And Sunnyside?
On Sunnyside, there will be parking on the west wing? Both? Both, yes. Both on Sunnyside.
I'm going to continue.
Sticking with transportation, in the, I can't remember exactly what document it is, we talk about VMT, and it's VMT per service population of 31.01 and 30.47. Can you explain to me what that number means, what the units are on it?
So if I can have the technical expert, traffic, you can explain that in full detail.
Good evening, I'm Steve Brown with Fair &amp; Peers. It sounds very fancy, but it really is fairly straightforward. It's vehicle mile travel, if a vehicle travels one mile, that's a vehicle mile traveled. If a vehicle travels two miles, that's two VMT. If two vehicles travel a mile each, that's two VMT.
So this is, this is, the unit is miles. So it's 31 miles in the base year and 30 and a half miles in 2040 cumulative year.
Vehicle miles traveled, yes.
Okay, yes, okay. All right, thank you. There is some question about the consistency between the general plan that's required in a reference to California Code 65454, and I'm just kind of curious, there's a, we received a comment along those lines that says that, and the quote, the quote from the California Code is, "No specific plan may be adopted or amended unless the proposed plan or amendment is consistent with the general plan." Can you explain, so does our specific plan agree with the general plan? And I'll follow up with that, is that the company hired to do the peer review said that the analysis wasn't adequate. Can you help me understand kind of the concern that's around this, and what does the California Code mean, and what does it mean with respect to the specific plan?
Let me try. Councilmember, I can look up this code section and provide you a clear response, but generally speaking, it's true that the specific plan has to be consistent with the general plan. Now, there are going to be general plan designations that don't, that the specific plan is going to change. Like, for example, in this case, the specific plan is going to change the general plan designation of the specific site from institutional to R1 with a specific plan overlay. That doesn't mean that it's inconsistent on its face. The specific plan procedure, the process exists to have these types of changes. The consistency requirement is that it's consistent with everything else in the code. So for example, the specific plan needs to be consistent with the environmental aspect, and the noise aspect, and the traffic aspect, and circulation, all those other aspects of the general plan need to be consistent with this new specific plan that you're introducing. The, it's staff's, it's staff's recommendation, or rather, it's staff's conclusion that it is consistent with the specific plan. The planning commission also found that it was consistent with the specific plan. If there's, if there is something particular about the specific plan that you feel is not consistent, I'm happy to address that particular aspect.
And the planning commission made a finding that the specific plan was consistent with the general plan. That was one of the things that they...
That's a required finding for purposes of approving the specific plan.
Okay. So staying on, on specific plan, have we had other developments in Sierra Madre that have had specific plans? Say like the one up on Cambria or Stonegate, and one of those, or...
Kensington actually has a specific plan.
How about other, that's a more institutional use. Is there one that, from a residential perspective, that we've had a specific plan?
No, that, like, such as one Carter or Stonegate does not have a specific plan.
And the Cambria one, which was a more planned development, did that have a specific plan that we know?
I don't believe so.
On the zoning of the site, there was a mention in the document that it was zoned institutional in 2016 and then changed to, or it was R1, changed to institutional in 2016. I'm curious, is when, how long had that, I guess it's that parcel, parcels 19 and 20? How long were they residential? And what was the, what happened in 2016 to make it changed? And when we were doing the general plan, how was it zoned? Was it zoned R1 then? Was that part of the conversation? Can you help me understand a little bit of the history of the zoning of these parcels?
So it was zoned R1. I remember looking at a very early map dated 1938, a general plan map that we have in our office. And then during the development of the general plan, that was changed, the land use designation was changed to institutional from residential and that, that portion. And as part of implementation of the general plan, we amended the zoning code, land use map, zoning map, to reflect the institutional zone.
So in 1938, it was R1, and then how did it get changed to institutional?
Through the general plan update.
So as part of the general plan, and then, and then it was changed in 2016, it, similar that we've done with other parcels more recently that we've had, where there was a difference between zoning and the general plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
On the housing size, the, in page 3.2 of the specific plan, it says the largest house is 3,775, but then Table 3.2 says that the maximum gross floor area is 4,250 square feet. Is the difference because that includes the garage, or is there another reason for the difference between the 3,775 and 4,250?
That's shown, the larger size that you described includes the garage.
How much parkland are we required to have?
I don't recall. It's basically a per-person calculation for a parkland, average parkland for any city designation. I don't recall the exact number, maybe, I'm not sure if one of the technical team members knows that equation as well. No.
And just in kind of in general, how close are we to that number? Are we, you know, close to it? Are we 50%? Are we 5%? Are we 90%? Any, and I don't want to hold you to an exact number, because I imagine you don't have it right here right now, but I'm trying to get an idea of how much parkland are we supposed to have, and how much do we actually have?
I would imagine if we exclude areas that are not within the city, such as the trails above the Bailey Canyon Wilderness Park in LA County, possible trails, Mount Wilson Trail, that if we exclude those areas, we'd probably be around average or slightly below, only with, you know, provided two small neighborhood parks and two community parks.
And if I can just interject, I don't know the exact formula or answer to it, but I know I saw a scorecard that, but it probably included some of the open space, that Sierra Madre was something like a B+ in comparison to our neighbors in Los Angeles County.
Thank you. Just two more questions. Thank you for everyone's patience. What's the status, so there's been some question around the, an engineering report for the retaining wall on the south end of the property, and some discussions between the developer and the homeowners there. Do we have an update of, is there going to be an engineering report? Is that in process? What, you know, this is probably for Mr. Frankel, I think. Do we know the status of that?
So currently, what we saw are conceptual site plan of the property and conceptual landscape plan. So the engineering report will be prepared, but it will not be, it's not prepared as of now. I'm sure there's been a number of soil studies that were taken at the site early on in this process, and of course, that engineering report will determine if there's any surcharge impact to the existing residential walls onsite, and then there would have to be a determination as to remediation or mitigation if there are any impacts to the properties along the southern edge of that park.
Is there a timing associated with that?
That would have to be completed as part of the design review permit application.
Okay.
Robert, I actually have a couple of follow-up questions on that exact topic, so I thought it might be better to just cover it now. So if, if there were to be mitigation required, as you mentioned, is there a way to compel those mitigation measures to be taken? I mean, I know it's not contractually, you know, part of the development agreement, but is that, you know, a condition to consideration of approval of design review and other, other aspects of Phase Two? Or what would be the mechanism by which those mitigation measures would be compelled to be...
That could be included as a condition, could be included as a condition of public works or planning to provide mitigation specific to reduce any impacts to the properties to the south caused by a surcharge from that park. So that would be entered into as a condition of approval.
A condition of approval at that time?
Yes.
Okay. And then, to the extent that whatever those mitigation measures are, and obviously we don't know, not having the studies, if they are pervasive enough that it actually changes the design or would require changes to the specific plan or parts of the project that we considered as part of Phase One, what would that process look like? Would we have to revisit, you know, anything that was determined in the first phase?
Could be considered a, either a minor or major modification, depending of what that extent of mitigation would be, and that would be referred either to the city manager as a minor modification or to the city council.
Okay. And this, none of this affects the SEQA requirements, or would there need to be, depending on the scope, any, any additional SEQA analysis?
I don't believe that would be an impact necessarily, necessary to revise a SEQA document. If there were remediation, I can say, I can think of, maybe it's a stormwater capture to be able to direct any deep water from entering or going below the properties to the south. If it's a matter of retaining walls, say the existing retaining walls that are not continuous at the individual properties, maybe that could be a mitigation that a continuous support and place concrete wall be erected to protect those properties, and that could be included on, on the park side of the property.
Could I jump in and follow up with a related question, just kind of follow up? In reading the, the specific plan, talks about how the park is considered to be kind of a buffer zone for people on the south side of the property. And I was talking with somebody whose backyard is right up against it yesterday, and they had some questions about precisely what that would look like from their point of view looking up. Could you guys just paint a picture of, I know where the park looks at, but what is, what is that border going to look like right up against those southern-facing properties, north-facing properties?
Yeah, so if you recall, I showed an exhibit with varying, various cross-sections, site-specific cross-sections from specific properties, showing varying conditions. Some were higher, some were lower, and the typical would be, you have a house, the depth of the rear yard setbacks do vary in some cases, with houses set back fairly deeply, and others a little bit more closely to the edge of the park. The view would be of a landscaped berm.
When I heard, I heard that term, and I remember we, when we went to the site visit, I remember some discussion of that. How big is that? What kind of an angle? If I'm, if I'm in the backyard looking towards the field, what does that going to look like?
The berm is, what we're looking at specific just to the berm is an average width or depth of 18 feet. The slope then would probably be maybe a three-to-one, two-to-one slope.
Not real steep.
Not too steep, and then with plant material, generally lower ground covers and shrubs to try not to impact the views of the mountains to the north, but still provide a privacy barrier from the passive park space.
Okay, thank you. Continue on, thank you for the interruption.
On the, the open space, the retreat center open space, is there, is there a timing associated with that? Does that get, you know, kind of like, you have to have... associated with that? Does that get, you know, kind of like, you have to have the, the road completed before the first permit, or I can't remember exactly what it was, or you have to have the turnkey car park after the tenth or twentieth permit? I can't remember exactly which, which one it is. Is there something tied to that for the, the retreat center open space?
With respect to the retreat center open space, council member, it, section three of the development agreement states that within twenty-four months of the effective date of the development agreement, the congregation is going to submit a tentative track map application to divide that lot. So that lot where the retreat center is going to sit on, they're going to divide that between the retreat center open space and the retreat center itself. And once that's divided, like we said, they're going to record a, they're going to record a lot tie to make sure that those two parcels, the open space and the one that the retreat center sits on, can't be sold separately. And once that lot tie is recorded, then as a condition of the tentative track map, the congregation, because the tentative track map is going to be processed alongside, the congregation's tentative track map is going to be processed alongside the developer's tentative track map. Because if you remember, the developer's going to split the southern lot, and the congregation's going to have to split their lot. It's going to be processed together. And as a condition of their tentative track map, they're going to have to record a conservation easement. And they're going to have to, and they're, and they're going to have to begin the process of changing the zoning designation to open space. And that all has to happen before the final map is recorded. The final map is a two, it can, I believe it's valid for, the, the tentative map is valid for two years before it expires. So they will have two years to do all that in order to record the final map.
So that's before anything is built? Like if you do a tentative track map before you build?
Likely this, likely this will all happen before anything is, is built, likely, most likely.
Councilmember Parkers, can I just follow up question to that? So at, at this point, the two proposed lots for the conservation easement that are north of the retreat itself, that is part of, that is one parcel right now, including with the retreat itself? Is it retreat, those two, and that's one parcel?
It's two separate parcels.
So, so you have two up there in the mountain, and you have that one, you have one chunk, that's the retreat center. And that, that chunk that's the retreat center, that's the one that's going to be cut in half, and it's going to be an open, it's going to be the retreat center open space, and it's going to be the retreat center proper.
So the one that is proposed to be the conservation easement is already two parcels, but now there's a recommendation to tie the two together?
Not, not quite. If we could have a map, I think it'd be easier to, to show them on a map.
I think it's, it's number-
Slide, slide seven?
I think it's slide seven.
Yeah.
There we go. So the area of the retreat center includes that location highlighted in orange, the restricted, which will become a restricted use area. So that would be the subdivision. The upper two parcels, the one on the left in Los Angeles County, the one on the right will remain as an open space parcel, but with a conservation easement.
And to further illustrate that point, when this subdivision happens, right here, the lot tie is going to tie these two together. That's what the lot tie is about. Because we don't want, what we don't want is for this parcel to somehow be sold separately, and then someone thinks, oh, there's some flatland here, I can now develop it. We don't want people to have that false assumption. So we want to make sure that these two parcels can never be sold separately.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. I, for some reason, I thought the tie was for the, the top two.
Can, can I ask a follow-up about the obligation to do that subdivision in, in the second phase? Is that just a contractual obligation under the development agreement whereby the remedies would be whatever the remedies are, you know, the, the enumerated remedies under the development agreement? Or is there some other way that we can create some, you know, binding obligation to do that? Or is it part of a process that doing that would, would be a condition precedent to, you know, further approvals or other stages of the project?
There, there are no further approvals for the congregation at that point. I believe so. Under the development agreement, the, that would be the only, the, the development agreement is the only document obligating the congregation to take that step.
So then the remedy would just be for some sort of breach of-
Specific performance, right.
Okay. And there's no, even though it's, even though it wouldn't be the congregation's obligation around the, the various development aspects, that's obviously within the developer's control, even though they're all party to one agreement, there's no way to tie the developer obligations or rights to get, you know, or approvals to the actions of the congregation?
It, it may be possible. We're, we're treating them as, as two separate parties for purposes of this development agreement. That's not to say it's not possible. We can explore that possibility if, if the council member wants.
Thank you.
I think this is my last question then. So how many model units are there going to be?
Councilmember, we think they're probably likely to be between three and four, but it may depend. Six months ago, builders weren't even opening models because people were buying them and they were getting under contract, and they were being sold prior to model opening. So that, you know, the caveat there, it is subject to market conditions, but we would expect three to four.
And, and those models, they would be all electric? All, all, the stove would be electric, the water heater would be electric, and the furnace would be electric? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and if people wanted to, they, they could have one-third of their unit B, or their home B gas, say they really wanted to have a gas stove, but they could have a, a heat pump for, for the HVAC, and they could have an electric water heater. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Thank you all. I'm, I've exhausted my questions.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'll get the kind of minor ones out of the way first. That may or may not have any impact on anything, but one of the things we're asked is whether or not to adopt the specific plan, and I'm looking on page eleven, one dot six dot four, compliance with the Californian SEQA. The last, the last sentence there has a resolution number, and I'm assuming it's the resolution we have before us. I feel like there's a phrase missing there. It reads, "In accordance with the California State Law, the draft, EIR was publicly noticed, I guess, and circulated for public review," which is true, "from August second, twenty twenty-one to October fir-, fourth, twenty twenty-one." And I, I feel there's a couple word omissions there. I'm thinking it must say, "And the final EIR was certified." Is that, is that correct language?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. And I, this is a document that's going to be around potentially for a while. I want to make sure that's, that's changed and reflected accurately. Sorry, my questions are kind of all over the place. One that just comes off the top of my head, while watching most of, if not all, of the planning commission meetings that have to do with this project, I, I didn't hear a lot, any mention regarding residential low density, the RL zone. In the specific plan, we see RL and we see OS, which is open space. Open space is a definition that does exist within our municipal code and our general plan and our zoning maps, et cetera. But RL, I couldn't find anywhere through my investigation. I understand what it means, and I understand we're looking at a specific plan rather than one house under, in an R1. But my question, is that, is that something that exists within our, our code? Is this a new, is this new language per the specific plan? And then a follow-up on that, is I want to make sure that, yes, there is a specific plan, but if this all gets approved and built, after that, this, this section would be an R1 following everything's being built.
R1 specific plan. Regarding the residential low density, that's the land use designation.
I looked at the, the land use map, and I didn't see RL anywhere there. Maybe I'm wrong, but-
Yeah, it should be residential low density.
Understand, yeah, what it stands for, but I didn't, I, I didn't see it. But I, I just want to make sure we're, we're following the rules here and, and looking at the right designations. Next, I'm trying to understand, I'm looking at the site development regulations, which are on page forty-four of the specific plan, and there's a chart at the top of page forty-four of the specific plan, and this chart has changed thanks to, everyone has said it, the, the diligence of our planning commission. It's hard for us to even have questions because the, the planning commission was so diligent in their review of, of everything. But we have, we have an average floor area, you have thirty-five hundred square feet. That was reduced, I think, from forty-two fifty originally, but we've added gross floor area max of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square feet, which is a reduction, I think. Or maybe that was an addition. But as I go to appendix five B, and maybe I'm, maybe appendix five B isn't completely tied to promised designs, but the largest square foot home I see is the farmhouse contemporary at thirty-two hundred square feet. So I, I'm just kind of confused as to how we, I mean, maybe, maybe it just never contemplated, are we holding the developer to these thirty-two hundred square foot homes as the largest? Or are we holding them to three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square feet? And appendix five B is just for illustrative purposes?
I'm going, going to, basically, the, the largest house would be thirty-seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. If I can have the applicant clarify this.
Thank you, council members. So two things. At the planning commission, they included, obviously, the Sierra Madre municipal code includes the garage in the total footage. So thirty-two hundred square feet, we actually think would be the actual net habitable, meaning the actual floor space of the house where you're living. So the houses are actually going to be smaller than the maximum. At least that's what we plan now. Of course, the regulations would allow us to go up to thirty-seven seventy-five. So it's typically thirty-two hundred, and then, you know, plus another four hundred. So that's, that's how the calculation breaks down.
So the gross floor area is kind of the, the, outside of Sierra Madre, the, the metric?
Exactly. And in that illustrative example, I think we were thinking of a more, maybe a, a situation prior to the planning commission revision where you'd be thinking of just the actual habitable floor space.
That makes sense.
So, oh, hold on. So when, when you say there's an extra four hundred square feet, that would represent the, the garage?
The garage, correct. Correct. Exactly right, Councilmember Creep. So a garage is typically twenty by twenty. So that, that's the standard size of four hundred square feet.
Thank you.
While, while you're up, up there, I just thought of another question while looking through our, our one code. I know it's not R1, it's specific plan, right? But there's, we talk about setbacks here, front yard to main building and to garage. Is it, I know within our R1 code, there's, there's setback rules regarding uncovered balconies and covered balconies. Is, is any of that contemplated in here? I didn't see it. I'm assuming you're not going to have the large balcony because it probably would look great, protruding way out near the street?
Right. The balconies are planned to be set furthest back from the street, and so that's, you know, typically how the design, just for usability, you're not going to want to put them right on the street.
Thank you.
I just have a question about setbacks as well. In one of the many planning commission meetings, there was discussion about variation of setbacks on any particular of the ABC and streets, ABC streets, so that, you know, you wouldn't have sort of a row of houses that all had the same setback from the street. And I, I didn't actually see that documented anywhere, so I don't know if that was just not an agreed point, or maybe I missed it and it was covered in some, in some other way. But I thought that at one point, there had been discussion of varying it so that, so that there would be different setbacks, you know, on each street.
There was discussion of that. It was not ultimately incorporated into the plan. With the exception of west of Sunnyside, there is a, is variation on the rear setback there as the privacy buffer that we've incorporated. So that was incorporated into the plan.
And some of these are, I guess, minor, but in my mind, you know, we're, we're planning things for potentially when we're all dead and buried. I mean, we're, we're thinking about, we're thinking about we have potentially live with this, but also we have, as a council, I think we're bound to think long-term as well. So I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not a engineer or technical expert on communications, but thinking about mobile, mobile service, and right now, that's something important to us. When we have rolling blackouts and electricity going out, we have to rely on our mobile devices to potentially get information or to contact emergency services, et cetera. Does forty-two homes impact that neighborhood, Upper Hastings Ranch and Sierra Madre, as far as, and I don't know if anybody has the answer to this, as far as cell service is concerned, do we, are we going to want a tower somewhere in the conservation space? Or are, are we going to be okay with, with our existing infrastructure?
I'm not, I, I really don't have an answer for that.
I didn't think so. But I, I thought I'd ask maybe somebody had.
I would imagine that an additional tower would be welcomed by-
Sure.
-area residents.
And, and would it be okay within those, those two tracks that were up in the, in the hillside, which are conservation? Given their conservation, could something that is not easily seen, could that be built up in that area?
Just like we have in our park space at, in our, in our parks, that certainly could be an option. I think we'd have to take a, a careful look at that. Possibly the smaller 5G implementation with the, the smaller devices on existing poles, telephone poles in other areas of the community may be more, more helpful.
Let me jump in here. I, I lived on Sierra Keys Drive. We left there in two thousand nine to go down to Ramone Avenue. We could never get cell coverage up there. I was on Verizon, and other people would visit, and they had T-Mobile, and nobody could get cell coverage. I don't know if that's changed, but I was up the other day visiting some people up on Fairview, and I couldn't get coverage on my Verizon at that time. So I think that's a generalized problem that that part of town has anyway. So, yeah, great. If we could have a conversation about a new tower there, I think that would help a lot of people.
It'd be tough to sell homes if you can't use your cellphone there.
And when you're talking about this, I, just so I'm clear, you're talking about it within the lower portion of, of, of the property, not up above the monastery?
Well, I was contemplating above the monastery, because the lower portion, I didn't really, I know there's a slight grade, but I don't know that that would be something high enough to then have coverage for that area.
But if you had a conservation easement on the land, how would you be able to put a pad and a backup generator in someplace that has a conservation easement?
That was my exact question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, 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 I, I, I'm not clear that that's, is that clear to me that, that you could do that? Because-
I think the way the conservation easement is structured is no habitable structures can be placed within the conservation easement.
So, so would this be above the monastery? Or if we could have the map back up, it could be helpful. There's, you know, there's the two parcels that are up, one is in LA County, one is in Sierra Madre.
I wouldn't anticipate-
Would those be places you could put?
I, I wouldn't anticipate placing towers or other devices in those areas. They're going to be very steep and difficult to access.
Well, and with a backup generator on a cell tower in that area, that gets me really nervous. Now, you bring it down into the restricted use area, I'm much more comfortable because there's going to be a road up in there.
Right. That's what I was imagining.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. I'll try to hit the big points. Just, just curious, fifty years regarding the useful life of a house for the offset water. I know that's already been negotiated and talked about, but how do we contemplate fifty years? Is that because after fifty years, something's a historic designation, and it's technically an old house? Or is, is there?
No. You know, houses last longer than fifty years, but usually the useful life of, life of a structure is now anticipated to be a fifty-year lifespan.
Okay. Water question. So thinking about the way, thankfully, city manager, we know so, knows so much about water and explains so much about how we distribute with gravity rather than using lots of electricity. We have to pump up there, but then gravity pushes everything around. And I'm, I'm looking at page sixty-five of the specific plan, and I see the existing water main, and I'm seeing the proposed water mains, and I can down- down on Grove Street, I can see that our little, uh, it's not a well, but it's a reservoir that, gravity feeds that area. And I'm thinking like Edge View Drive and, and places around there, is that, is that the reservoir that feeds that? And will it have enough gravity to push through these proposed new, um, water mains?
Thank you for that question, Mayor Protem. So that is, basically, that's at a zone split. So what you see there, Grove Reservoir is actually zone two. This project would be fed from zone three, which is fed from Auburn Reservoir, which sits higher above the, higher above the proposed project, yes.
Thank you for that.
Mayor Protem, can I ask a similar question?
Please.
Somewhat along same lines. Um, with respect to the net zero proposal and, um, Attorney Gergos, and you'd stated that the, the slide that we saw, there's been a modification and that the dollar amounts, whatever that range would be, up to nine hundred thousand plus, can be used in any of those ways. Does that include the reduction of, um, the water distribution that was part of that? Let's see. I think it was, the option B, and it, it said any sums expended on option A can be used as remaining funds. Just thinking about water distribution, um, and, and that question, can the, the water payments for the net zero, whatever the range may be, be used for reducing the water, um, reduction distribution if necess, if necessary?
So I'll identify that specific language. I'll just read it out and I'll let the city manager interpret it. It says the city may use the, may use any of the funds listed above to reduce water distribution system water loss by investing in the city's water main replacement program.
Councilmembers, Mandy, one of the, one of the biggest contributing factors to reducing our water loss is the aggressive water main replacement program that we've had since twenty seventeen. So the, this funding could be used to further advance, uh, water main replacement and reduce water loss to our distribution system.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow that up though? From a, can, can we quantify that? I mean, where's our biggest bang for the buck if we're doing the purchase or the, the leak fixing or possibly turf removal?
Mayor, I think, um, with the, the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that would be designated for purchase of water, if supplemental water purchase is available, I feel that, that our priority should be to, to try to acquire that. And if a certain amount of time goes by and it's, it's evident that we can't, uh, purchase supplemental water, then at that point, uh, we can make that determination to, um, advance our water main replacement.
So dollar for dollar, that's a better deal right now?
I believe so, yes.
Mayor, one point of clarification. When the planning commission considered the net zero water issue, uh, they wanted to make sure that the city, the city had the greatest amount of flexibility in determining how to spend the money. When they made those amendments, uh, they stated that the, they added that the payment contemplated in the section four DI will be used for any of the following purposes, and there's three purposes. And at the end, they included a line that says, instead of saying the remaining funds, it says any of these funds can be used for purposes of water main replacement. However, section A still says up to three hundred thousand, up to three hundred eighty thousand dollars can be used for the water purchases. And up to five hundred thirty thousand dollars can be used for the lawn replacement program. Now, it's up to the council whether or not you wanted to scratch those limitations and, and have the flexibility to apportion as much other funds as you want for those three sources. And if the council wants to do that, we'd have to consult with the, with the applicant to confirm that that's okay with them.
That was, go ahead. That was the recommendation from the planning commission?
The, that, that was the intent of the planning commission, I believe. It's just that they never got around to, uh, amending those limits.
Yeah, that was, that was my question. So, yeah, I'd heard you earlier tonight say that there weren't going to be dollar limits on any particular strategy, but then this sounds like maybe there is. And is there any history or rationale why there would need to be earmarked for one category versus the other? I mean, why, I mean, maybe it's a question for the developer, but why it would matter, um, why the, the city wouldn't have full discretion?
So I believe at the time this was being negotiated, um, the, the city was trying to determine, the, the city didn't have all the funds it has today. What was promised was a lesser amount. And based on that lesser amount, um, I think it was something close to three hundred eighty thousand, or something closer to five hundred thousand dollars. Based on that lesser amount, we decided that this, this percentage, I think it was three hundred eighty of the five hundred, was going to go to the net zero water purchases and we wanted, uh, at the time, the, the city was trying to make sure that residents themselves are also benefited. And to make sure that residents are benefited, we would earmark a, a specific portion for turf replacement. I believe that's what it was.
If I can add, um, is my microphone on?
And we didn't have water main replacement at that time either.
So, so the idea, the three hundred and eighty plus would replace about, would purchase about one thousand, one thousand fifty acre feet. The project is estimated to use about twenty-one acre feet per year and over the course of the fifty years would be about a thousand acre feet. So that would replace that water. And to advance net zero, we further negotiated, um, additional revenue so that we can retrofit existing homes with turf replacement and alternative lawns, um, and that would further reduce the impacts on our water system. So that's where the two come from.
But is there any reason we would necessarily want to hamstring ourselves or future councils to, to box them into certain amounts and certain categories? I mean, I, unless I'm missing something, I would be in favor of having, you know, full, full discretion across all three categories because, you know, as we've said, as you've said, you know, that the availability of wa, you know, water is going to be dependent on something that we can't control. And so I'd hate to have a pot of money there that, you know, we can't use for a long time or at all.
Yeah, I, I think the idea of purchasing water now in today's dollars makes a lot of sense as opposed to deferring it. And the idea here was that the initial three hundred and eighty replaces that net zero. And it gives, and it sets some money aside specifically for retrofitting lawns, um, but we can certainly entertain, uh, bringing those together and having the city council decide how they want to spend that money.
Other question? Yeah, so I'm looking at page forty-eight in the specific plan, the unit mixed ma, uh, unit mixed requirements and, um, Mr. Frankel explained the gross fit floor area and the disconnect. I had my mind between, uh, the appendix, so I understand part of it now. And I know it was explained during the planning commission meetings, but if I could have the applicant or the developer really give us a good explanation of plan one, two, and three, that twenty-five, thirty-five, forty mix, what that means for the development, how it's going to look. Because it's, this is well done, but it's not, in plain language, it's not really easy to understand, um, plan one, two, and three, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. So, um, what it means from a practical standpoint, uh, the unit mix is that no house on any individual street will ever be repeated twice. That's what it means from a diversity standpoint. So when you're on street A and you're walking down street A, you are never going to see the same elevation, the same architectural style and the same floor plan and the same color on the street. And so that, I think, was the unit mix, was the primary objective of the planning commission to ensure that diversity. So just in really practical terms, that's, that's really what it means.
And part of the unit mix is square footage as well, can you?
Correct, yes. So plan ones are all, those twenty-five, those are all one stories. Plan twos are a little bit larger, plan threes are a little bit larger than that. And so you want, you know, a diversity of floor plans and of sizes depending on family needs. You know, you're in our industry, you know, the, the diversification of your product line, just like, you know, we all have iPhones and there's Samsung Galaxy S, six, eight, ten, so on and so forth. And so we want to make sure that there's the same thing and that we're providing options for, for, for future home buyers.
Thank you.
See, you still have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you've.
That's fine, that's fine.
You want to?
We'll be patient.
Yeah, it's kind of on that same cons, uh, we're talking about concepts and, you know, there's no one-story craftsmen. Is, is it never going to be contemplated? Is this kind of what, what the designs you're going with? I do only see one-story Spanish and one-story modern, um, and everything else is, is, well, not everything else, but two-story, right?
So the conceptual elevations that we included are representative, but that's not exhaustive, meaning there will be plan ones. There are eleven total units in plan one, so there will absolutely be, the, all, all four architectural styles will be represented in the plan one.
Okay, great.
And, and who decides? So are you going to, I mean, I know you've, you've, you've laid out sort of two-story versus one-story. But as the developer, are you going to make decisions about, you know, which houses and which styles and which plan it is, or is that something that's going to be part of the sale process and folks can customize their own house?
We will be making the determinations regarding the exterior elevations.
Want to follow up on that, so we're talking about facades. How about, we see in four different versions, there's, how much variability is there in these actual facades? Are they pretty much set? Are they, can they be fairly fluid?
So I think that the overall concept, meaning the materials that potentially could be used, the specific plan really provides that menu of options. So think of it as, you know, here are the following five materials that could be used on the exterior of the facade. As we go through and refine those though, uh, the, the refinements will be with, with respect to color and accent trim. So that's how you're going to differentiate. So the differentiation will occur in color, it will occur in floor plan, and it will occur in style.
So would you be selling the house and then working with the buyer on what that would look like? Are you going to build and then sell the, sell the design you've built?
So the buyers have a lot of flexibility in the interior of the space. Um, and so we're going to have a number of options and if you like, really like a plan one craftsman in color scheme two, that will be available and there'll be a menu of options for buyers and they'll be able to select what they like, the color, the trim, the floor plan and the elevation, the style. And then on the interior, um, that's where buyers have a lot of fun in really choosing really, uh, everything that they want. Their, you know, all of their finishes, all their fixtures, all of those things is, is completely custom to them.
But the basic facades are going to be pretty much the same, aside from maybe differences in materials, that type of thing?
So of course, the styles will be very different in the four styles, but yes, there will be, uh, we will, we will determine what the kind of facades look like. There's not going to be a lot of optionality on the facade for the buyer.
So if you have a street with like ten or eleven houses on it, are you going to stagger that? Are you going to do the four? How, how are you going to figure that?
Well, it's something we worked very closely with the planning commission on to ensure, as I mentioned to Councilmember Garcia's question, that there is no repetition. And so, um, on any given street, of course, within the community, there will be repetition on various streets, but on any given street, there will not be a repetition of the exact same floor plan and the exact same style.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up, so at some point, it's going to be locked in on what the houses are, so there's going to be lots of, of choice upfront, but then at some point in time, all of the craftsmen will be gone or all of the Spanish will be gone and, or, or purchased and, and so all that will be left will be the modern.
Yes, that's correct, and we're going to, you know, we, we will, um, obviously, within the parameters of the specific plan, but if there's, you know, huge demand for a craftsman style, provided it's consistent with the specific plan, we'd of course be happy to offer that to buyers.
I, I think I have only two more questions. Um, I do, I have some, maybe they're just mere curiosities. I don't want to waste anybody's time with that. I, I want to really dive down. So these two are at least one of these questions, maybe both. Were spurred by the presentations and Vincent, Director Gonzalez, mentioned that, um, this might be a question for, um, for Director Samino, but talking about the parks and the buffer zones and the common area landscaping, that the city would have a preference to only maintain the park space within the HOA. Can I have somebody explain what the thinking was on that?
Guess analyst, senior analyst Carlson is going to respond to that.
Yes, and I'll do my best to relay what Director Samino was, was thinking about there. We, we really maintain parks in Sierra Madre. We, we allow the residents to maintain their parkway and we, in fact, we think it's one of the best parts about Sierra Madre that everybody has a little bit of a different parkway. There are parameters, nothing dangerous, nothing hazardous, but it's not something our crew or even our, our contractor is really used to doing. So we really wouldn't want to take on that, that extra job.
Mayor Protem, if I may add, the lots are one hundred percent private. I don't, I believe there's no common area, there's no, there's no city property. So, uh, just like every other private parcel in the city, the owner maintains the parcel up until, even including the, the parkway.
Okay, and, and the buffer zone between the retreat center and street A, um, that's going to be maintained by the HOA, not, not the retreat center, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I think, uh.
So I, I think Councilmember Creep and I both have.
Go ahead.
Follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, but go ahead, you have one as well.
Okay. And so, so there, there will no be no, there will, there will not be any special assessment districts on this, it'll all be HOA, so they, in that area, okay.
No, no, the, the park.
Special assessment district?
Yeah, the, the park, the park, uh, staff's intending to maintain the park with a community facilities district. And the applicant will, will begin the, if this development agreement is approved, the applicant will begin the process of, um, forming the, the community facilities district. Staff is saying that they would recommend having that community facilities district be responsible only for the park and not for the common spaces in the development.
And so if we had a part of the common spaces, we could run into some of the same problems we've had with special assessment districts downtown and up in Santa Anita and, and any of those that we've had of mismatch, uh, of mismatching the funds collected and funds required.
Not, not, not so much, because those districts were created, uh, before Prop two eighteen and twenty-six, and so they were based on the value of the home as opposed to like a parcel tax set amount. Really, the difference here, I don't know, did that, that part make sense before I move off of it? So the, the.
Continue on, you may answer in the next part.
The, the issue here, uh, is that, it's two things. First, if the CFD were to include the common spaces, the parcel tax on the individual homes would be greater. Because then there's more to cover, there's more to maintain, there's the park plus those other spaces. Second, and more important for staff, administratively, it's just difficult. Because the staff has never taken on maintenance of these types of common spaces and neither has, uh, the vendors that we use. And so staff knows how to maintain parks and they can do that well. And they don't really have experience maintaining those common spaces, but if it's the council's direction to maintain both, we will maintain both.
And how you change, so what's the difference in kind of the fee structure between a, a value of the home and, and a, a parcel tax? Is, is one easier to change than the other?
So, so, so the districts that existed, uh, pre-Prop thirteen and all those, those, those districts assessed a tax based on the value of the home, those do not exist anymore. It's unlawful under state law to have such a district anymore. And the, and so those districts would accumulate a lot of money because the value of the homes just kept rising in California. And so the, the tax imposed is based on the value and so they would, they would collect a lot of tax. As opposed to these special parcel taxes, which were a set amount, not based on the value of the home. And but, and going forward, we're only going to have these, the special parcel tax as opposed to a tax on the value of the property because we can't do those anymore under state law.
So going back to this notion of the, who's going to maintain the, the parkway. My understanding from reading the materials and listening to the discussions of the planning commission is that the recommendation was to not have a homeowners association or HOA. And if I remember correctly, it, um, from the, the concerns raised by the planning commission was based on historical experience that many have had in other developments where the HOA became financially incapable of satisfying their obligations. And so I think the concern from their perspective was concern that ultimately perhaps the HOA, maybe not enough homes get built or something happens that the HOA cannot satisfy and then they are not maintaining those areas, I believe was the concern. So I guess, from the staff's perspective, in terms of not having the city, um, maintain them is, is, is then the recommendation from the staff to have the individual homeowners be responsible for maintaining their own, I think it's, I think it's the slope that, 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 that is contiguous to the backyards that we're really talking about, right?
Well, so I'm, I'm curious, is there a member of the planning commission here by chance that they can speak for themselves if?
Doesn't look like it.
No. I, I, I'll refer to Director Gonzalez on this.
So the example that was given was the Stonegate property, one, one Carter. And initially, when it was, uh, owned by Doran Platts, that went, uh, there was a lawsuit and that property was then purchased by the current proper, property owner, CETT. They did not purchase the open space parcels immediately above the project site, which was to be included with, with the overall. So they just let that go into default. And I think that's what the planning commission is referring to. There isn't a home.
Commission is referring to. There isn't a homeowner assoc, there is a homeowner association within that development, and there are parcels and open space that are maintained by that association. So those are maintained fairly well. What they were referring to is the default parcels surrounding that development that were sold off at auction.
If I can just follow up that just for a second, so I'm clear. Didn't one of those come up for sale recently?
It did. It was purchased, there was a couple of parcels that were purchased, one of them by a church, and they're trying to figure out and, and have tried to sell it numerous times, saying that it was viable development. But they, they purchased it at auction through the county.
So, so by tying those upper parcels, making the upper ones with, with, because part of the concern of this one parcel, if I understand it, is that it is got a very steep slope on it, and it, it's essentially undevelopable, but because of the bankruptcy of the developer, it, it went out in auction, and so someone thought that they might be able to develop, and now they're trying to sell it. And that's a, a big concern, because it's really, that's something that could be, should be developed.
Right. And it's zoned, open space, and cannot be developed, largely because of the steepness of the property.
So, so it's already zoned open space?
It's zoned open space.
Thank you. That was a little bit of a detour.
But that, that condition couldn't exist here, because the spaces we're talking about maintaining here aren't separate parcels, or they're, they're part of the... So to go back to my question, if, if the staff recommendation were to be, you know, adopted, then the reality would be that the individual homeowners would be responsible for maintaining those, that, that portion of their property, like, like I have to in my right of way?
It would not, because there would still be a homeowners' association that would maintain that, those, those sloped areas and some of the areas along the edges of the north-south streets.
Yeah, I guess I had seen HOA references struck in most, in most instances, but maybe, maybe that wasn't the case in all instances. So I, I guess I had assumed that the HOA concept is, was no longer part of the project, but maybe, but it sounds like that's not the case.
This might be my last one. Thank you for bearing with me here. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the off-site portion of Carter. And as all of us up here know, we've received lots of email public comment regarding that. So as, as we're thinking about that and contemplating that, and if, if the applicant is able to obtain part of the property from the county, and then that widening is contemplated, and one of the sidewalk configurations is contemplated, at that point in time, will there be a separate SEQA for, for that widening? Because I, I had some light reading of the SEQA handbook, and I know that municipalities are a little different than private citizens. Will there be a SEQA component to that, or is it, will it not be necessary?
So there was, in the draft environmental impact report, it did contemplate, and it was analyzed, another access point through Carter Avenue. Now what we're looking at is a widening of that road. So I, possibly, there could be additional environmental review. We would have to make a determination if it's substantial enough to warrant maybe even a focused SEQA analysis of that impact.
Thank you. Yeah, and I did re-review the draft EIR, and I did see the, the contemplation of the opening up from Carter to Bailey Canyon and, and that. So, yeah, I saw that. Thank you.
Just one follow-up question on that about the sidewalks. I know there's two options presented. Who makes that determination and, and when in the process? Is that a developer decision? Is that a council decision? Is it Planning Commission through design review?
It's probably a combination. It's, it's certainly, whether or not, you know, especially for option two, with that kind of looping road, that's going to save a few stands of cypress trees. It goes quite deep, almost just below the, the, the line of the adjacent park, a parking lot. So you can see, it, it traverses almost close to the top edge of the, you can see the park, parking lot to the right. So it's, it's almost two-thirds to the north to be able to achieve the accessibility requirements. But I would imagine both the, you know, the Planning Commission would also deliberate on these options, and it would also depend if LA County would allow the developer to, to lease or acquire a, a segment of that, that component of that land.
And I, I'd like to, to ask the developer to perhaps come up and clarify, but it was my understanding at the Planning Commission meeting that if the developer was able to secure that additional area, that they, they would in fact use that first option that curves around. But if they were unable to secure that additional area, and they were only able to do the, the, the more limited expansion, then, then that's what they would do. I thought it was based on what they were able to acquire from the county.
That's correct. City Attorney Gergosian. So, we're going to present both options to the county, and we're going to attempt to acquire the rights to implement both. So, but as to the council, Planning Commission, city's ultimate determination, you know, I think we're, we're open to whatever the, the, the city would like to see done there.
So I want to find out how many more questions we have, because I'm, we're getting, we've almost been here two hours. I want to make sure people don't leave because they're getting tired. I want to make sure we have maximum public comment here. So I'm thinking maybe we take a break right now for 10 minutes, come back and do public comment, and then we could, if we have more questions, we could do that when public comment is exhausted. Are we good with that?
Sure.
Okay, well, it's 10, 7:25, so we will recess until 7:35.
Everyone, hello. Could you all please take your seats?
No, no, I'm talking about, uh...
So, if I could get order now, please? So we got fifteen minutes instead of ten, that's great. Revived and ready to go. So this is a public hearing, and I'm opening it up now, and we will have public comment on the agenda item in front of us, which is pretty much everything you see on that agenda, if you have it. And we're gonna go by... Madam City Clerk has a list of cards that have been filled out. If you want to get on one, speak, and you haven't all got a card already, please come up and get one, or get one back there and fill it out. It's not too late to do that. And we will go by the order that she has, and I just wanted to remind you that you have three minutes, and I'm really concerned about expediting this meeting, being fair to everyone. So at two forty-five, I will...two forty-five in, I will remind you of fifteen seconds. You are expected to finish abruptly at three minutes. Okay, Madam City Clerk, you want to get things going?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We typically like to read the cards as we receive them. We did receive one request from Nancy Beckham to be asked to be moved to the front of the line because she needs to leave early. So we will read the first name, and then as you provide your fifteen seconds, we'll read, or we can say who's followed by, so that the next person is prepared to speak. And so Nancy Beckham is the first speaker.
I don't want it to start early enough so she could. Oh, well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex Arieta is the next speaker. Thank you. Speaker after that would be David Baines.
Good evening. The city should not consider review of this project at this point until after the election, on number four of the initiative, which thirteen hundred registered voters signed for and made very clear. And with the time for the election so close, it would be irresponsible to consider and vote on this project at this point before the initiative has had its opportunity to be heard. Secondarily, the EIR review is incomplete. There's been no mitigation analysis by the planning commission. So is the city council going to review the EIR in its full hundreds of pages detail? I would hope so, because there are some huge, significant problems inherent with that final EIR, including the cardinal winding issue, which was not contemplated, and was not subject and open to public review and comment. There are significant concerns with the net zero water strategy, which keeps on changing. The Meadows Project that the city attorney talked about in his report mentions that the Meadows Project plus ADUs plus JDU's equals one hundred and twenty-six units. However, that's not being contemplated, that's not being discussed publicly to the same degree that the sixty-eight units is being discussed. Yet, one hundred and twenty-six units can be built on this same Meadows Project with ADUs and JDU's. Why isn't that not being discussed, like the sixty-eight units on the thirty-five acres? The best outcome would be for the city council to reject this plan and ask that a new one be prepared and compliance with the general plan. The reason why New Urban West made it a specific plan specifically is because it doesn't comply at all with our general plan. That was asked earlier, I think by Councilman Parkhurst. An example is building an extreme high-fire risk zone, which is outlined in our general plan, as we don't do that. But that's why a specific plan is being submitted by New Urban West, so they would not need to comply with our general plan. There's nothing more complex than that. Finally, there is a statement by a judge last week that the statement the city council has put forth about the sixty-eight homes being built was not only imprecise, it was false. And it implies that a developer could build sixty-eight units, not over decades, but rather in a single project of sixty-eight units and thirty-four lots. That is simply not true. That was a ruling by a judge last week in a statement for the ballot by the city council. Simply not true. And I think that the city needs to know that. City needs to understand that. Regardless of what city councilwoman Ayers-Metty says, that there is a victory, far from a victory.
Time is up, sir. Thank you. Okay. I want to be very clear here. We're commenting on items in front of us on the agenda. The Meadows Project is the item that we're discussing. So anything other than that is not on the agenda. So just to be clear. Okay.
The next speaker is Dave Baines, followed by Stephen Biscup. Mr. Mayor, Stephen Biscup, followed by Scott Oliver.
Good evening. On behalf of Stephen Biscup, who couldn't be here, he resides on the Upper Hastings Ranch next to the monastery. He'd like to give a big thanks to the planning commissioners who worked diligently into their stewardship dedication and hard work on the Bailey Project. In his humble opinion, he restored the Madre de la Rosa's monastery rights to sell part of their property. The funds generated will be used to care of senior priests and brothers who have an average age of seventy-seven. It bothered me for a long time to deny the monastery's ownership rights to sell. That would create a precedent for denying other owners the rights to sell their property on a free market. If you remember, I made an analogy of how you would feel if your neighbors, Tracy and Bob, would deny your rights to sell your home. In my humble opinion, the idea of building good quality homes is better than having a school or some other institution pull down the monastery property. Lastly, the proposed project will provide much-needed residences in order to shorten the housing crisis as the state of California faces. There are only ten homes on the market for sale in Sierra Madre right now, and thus it proves that there is a housing shortage. But please approve, city council, the project of the Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baines.
Mr. Mayor, Scott Oliver, followed by Claire McLean.
Hi, Scott Oliver, Wes Carter. First thing I want to talk about is the planning commission had a contingency about the purchase and the negotiations for the Carter property. I'd like to know, is that just the Carter section that goes to Lima? Because if it doesn't include the impact on Carter between Lima and Baldwin, especially Lima and Auburn, I mean, Carter between Lima and Auburn, that street's not wide enough for the amount of traffic that your own, their own traffic engineers cited. Seven to eight hundred weekly car trips, roughly a third figure going east, maybe more. Anybody with a brain in Sierra Madre tries to stay away from the main streets, Lima, Grandview, Highland, the Boulevard, Baldwin, and the fact that we can hopefully lobby the county to take a look at that as the secondary egress and ingress street, I'd like to know how that moves along. I'll get involved in it. Second thing I want to talk, and also, how are we gonna find out? If this is approved, how do we find out when all these mitigating factors are gonna be negotiated? Is there a way that we can be kept abreast? Because I hear, well, yeah, we're working on that. Well, yeah, we're working on that. Everything is mitigation to be completed after this is approved? That doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. I'd also like to talk about the berm. Your person that described the berm as holding back the interred water, and you're sitting next to an alluvial fan from Bailey Canyon. We all know, and we're talking about drought, but nobody's talking about what we're also seeing with climate issues around the world and in the United States. Sudden flooding, never before seen. We've all heard those words used. What if there was a catastrophic rainstorm? And when she was asked, this person that explained the berm and its ability to hold back, and it has a capacity level, she cited it. It was asked, what about capacity overflow? She said, we're working on it, it's being mitigated. There was no answer. My question would be, should the berm fail, what would happen to all the people below the homes? If you remember La Conchita, I worked in that area, and I saw the film of that landslide, liquefaction. This is gonna be a made berm. It's gonna be holding back huge amounts, potentially, of interred water, water underground. If Bailey were to have so much water that it failed, what would happen to the berm? Because if you've all seen the catch basin at Bailey, guess where the water's gonna go? It's gonna go to the right, it's gonna go west, right into your project, right into the berm. Is there anything? Is there any information? Did you not see Kentucky? Did you not see Pakistan? Have we not seen this? We've addressed the fire issues? The fire will be mitigating it. The flood will also mitigate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Claire McLean, followed by Philip Yao.
Hello. Thanks for letting me speak tonight, Claire McLean, four twenty West Sierra Madre Boulevard. So I am speaking for the voiceless, and I'm speaking for the trees. They seem like they have been completely ignored, and in a time of climate change, I cannot understand how you can cut down trees to replant trees. In what I wrote, New Urban West is planning on clearcutting more than a hundred trees to build their forty-two homes on the monastery property. They're unwilling to adjust their plans to save these trees. This really speaks volumes about their company, and it is not environmentally what we need to be doing today with climate change. In today's world of climate change, trees are valuable, they need to be protected. Possibly, if the amount of homes was reduced, the trees could be saved. Since the planning commission felt that these trees are unimportant, then it would be up to you, our city council, to see that these trees are saved. And you can do this. You can do this. These are healthy trees. If you cut them down, we should have a moratorium. We should have a time where we can go sit there and thank them for everything that they have done. I found a quote, it says, "The air is bad, plant a tree. It's too hot, plant a tree. Our soils are damaged, plant a tree. Too much wind, plant a tree. Protect our water, plant a tree. Shortage of food, plant a tree." You can never underestimate a tree. Thing is, these trees are already there. They have no right to be cut down, and there is a way that they can be worked around that. It has never been taken into consideration. Also, one more thing. In nineteen seventy-two, Sierra Madre was declared a wildlife sanctuary. Part of this sanctuary is on this property. If you don't go up there, you don't know. I go up there every evening, and I see the wildlife, I see what's happening, and this is totally gonna be destroyed. I mean, I have copies, this is on the website, about Sierra Madre being a wildlife sanctuary. I don't understand why it has never been addressed, and why New Urban West has never gotten the message. It's not fair, this resolution. Why has it never even been discussed? The wildlife up there, the trees, the whole situation, they have their whole ecosystem going on, and it's about to be completely destroyed. It doesn't have to be that way. The entrance to the monastery is absolutely gorgeous, and how old do you think those trees are, and why do you think it's okay to destroy them?
Just a few seconds left.
It's not. It's not okay to destroy them. Please find a way to work around it so that they can remain. They're there for a reason, and we need every single one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Philip Yao, followed by Father Michael Higgins.
Good evening. Philip Yao, five-one street, Sierra Keys, Sierra Madre. Been a resident for many years, since about the mid-eighties. Seen a lot of, you know, that's gone on in this town, much of it good. This one's perhaps not too good. I did email you folks. Unfortunately, I missed the two o'clock deadline. I was gonna go through that email. Not gonna do that, just gonna reflect on a few things that were said today, and hopefully clarify that. One of which is lot coverage. The numbers that I've heard bandied around is wrong, not what I've been hearing consistently. The lot coverage that is requested for this project exceeds what you would generally grant the neighborhood around the project. There was also a study by Mr. Henry Leong. He resides at four eleven North Sunnyside. He'd taken fifty houses around the project, and he compared them. And what he found was that of the fifty houses, five of them were two stories. That's ten percent, not thirty-five percent as requested. The other problem is, he found the lot sizes, average, he had tabulated eleven thousand square feet. Median was like about nine or ten thousand square feet. I'm doing this by memory. And he found that the average size of the homes were about two thousand square feet. So you can do the math on there. The lot coverage is fairly low, fairly consistently low, okay, for the neighborhoods around there. Let me move on. Sorry, eating up a lot of time right now. As far as one and two stories, again, I cover, I just want to emphasize that. What his tabulation shows is a five out of fifty, about ten percent, as opposed to what the requested is, thirty-five percent. First time I saw a rendering of the berm, as with Queenie Shore, who resides a couple streets away from me in Crestville, I think they were after this information for a long time, never having received it. I certainly would like to know, not just a cross-section, but what it would look if I were looking towards the mountain. It's very daunting to say that you're gonna have a big berm. I do have a big, you know, retaining wall right now. It's done fairly well through the years, but on the O'Nino years, actually, I do buy flood insurance, really consistent with the people that are concerned with right now. I am very concerned about, you know, flooding, and that's, you know, I, loss of life is one thing, loss of property at least could be mitigated with some insurance. Okay, real quick, runoff on the, don't forget, in nineteen ninety-four, we had a father and daughter perish. In the runoff basin, and that was just a flash flood, okay? It's very tragic. I remember that very well. It took over a week for them to excavate to find these individuals. Tragic indeed, okay? And net zero water usage doesn't sound like it's net zero anymore with all the diversion of funds. You cannot call it net zero and divert all the funds.
Mr. Mayor, Father Michael Higgins, followed by Father Clemente Barron.
Good evening, council members. I am Father Michael Higgins, a resident of Sierra Madre, living at seven hundred North Sunnyside Avenue at the Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. If I weren't a priest, I would tell you that I was a young man with lots of hair when we started working toward this hearing tonight. While that's not true, I was definitely a younger man. And a man who was much more naive about this process than I should have been. It's said that God works in mysterious ways, which is often true. It can also be said that government works in long-protected ways, which has been the case. That has been frustrating, because we are pursuing this path for such good and important reasons. Funds from this sale will be used to serve many people in underserved communities here in America and internationally, in places like Haiti and India. These funds will also help us put more people into touch with the incredible spiritual power of Christ's passion through retreats like those we host every week at Madre de la Rosa. And they will also be used to tend to our many aging Passionist priests and brothers. Having taken the vow of poverty, we Passionists are dependent on our province to care for us when we retire and grow older. So much could have been done if this sale had taken place just a few years, if this sale had taken just a few years to take place. But the need hasn't gone away, not at all. There is so much good to be done, and the funds will be used to better people's lives now, just as they would have been before. A positive that comes from this is the Meadows Plan itself. Finding New Urban West was a Godsend for us Passionists, and we believe for Sierra Madre. They really care about communities and have gone to lengths we could not have imagined at the outset to ensure that their plan will fit into Sierra Madre and will protect the sanctity of our grounds. I think the plan that is before you is probably as good as you will ever get, and I encourage you to vote tonight to approve it. And once that is out of the way, you can focus your efforts on defeating the onerous and discriminatory measure HR. It breaks my heart that people would create a measure that is so detrimental to us. And I hope that your good efforts opposing it will help lead to its defeat. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment. Now, we've had two speakers mention the valid initiative. This is just to be about the Meadows Project from here on. I'd like that to be observed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Father Clemente Barron, followed by Christina Driver. Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Father Clemente Barron, followed by Christina Dreyer.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your service. Father Clemente Barron, I also live at seven hundred North Sunnyside with the Passionist Community, Madre de la Rosa, and I'm here just to introduce a short video that has been already given to the staff.
This will come in under three minutes, right?
So I'm told.
Okay.
I'm so excited about this new project. It is a really beautiful use of the property. We've got this magnificent acreage just south of the Retreat Center. We've got this wonderful park plan for the public. It is going to benefit everyone. It's just going to be lovely, and actually with very minimal impact on traffic, or water, or anything to the local residents.
I have two little ones, a three-year-old and a six-year-old, and I'm always on the lookout for a property that has a park or a playground, or some piece of nature where I can be out and take my kids. I think it's a great asset, and I think it's going to be a blessing to a lot of families.
I've been a resident of Sierra Madre since two thousand and nine. In fact, me and my family, we do not live very far from the property. I support the Meadows at Bailey Canyon, because it is absolutely the best use of this property, and fully consistent with the community of Sierra Madre.
I see the development only improving the values of the community. The housing impact will only improve the area, it will give a better tax base to the city.
I strongly feel that the new development, new project will bring value to the local community of Sierra Madre, and the home value will go up. So I totally support this project.
I am so thrilled that we've got this great opportunity to have a beautiful residential community offered to other people who are going to be able to enjoy and become part of this very special Sierra Madre community.
I'd say the project is really a wonderful project, and, and our experience with New E is, has been just wonderful. They've been so sensitive to our concern, because we want to keep the Retreat Center a place, a sacred place, with quiet and solitude. And they've been very concerned to help do that, and also very concerned about the quality of life here in Sierra Madre. The Meadows is a great project, and will serve both our needs, and will bring some new life and freshness into the city as well.
I support the Meadows at Bailey Canyon, because it provides a great opportunity for young families like us, who are looking to move out, but have a beautiful space and place to call home.
I support the Meadows of Bailey Canyon, because it will be such a wonderful addition to the community of Sierra Madre, and it will give forty-two families a chance to have a wonderful life.
Okay, I wasn't quite expecting what was in that. There are several different people commenting, and I'm going to have to say, anybody that was in that video has had their opportunity to speak tonight, and Father Higgins ended up getting a few more seconds than I probably intended, but I don't think he intended that. So I just want to be fair. Madam City Clerk, can we continue?
Thank you. Then, Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Pat Alcorn, followed by Cameron Thornton.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Pat Alcorn, and I live on Grandview. You pretty much answered all of my questions, but I just wanted to make one point, that it's really important, I think, to incorporate the Planning Commission's recommendations regarding the Carter Street improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, Cameron Thornton, followed by Marta Salgado Niño.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, my name is Cameron Thornton. I live at one-three-four-seven J. Lee Circle in Glendale. And I'm here tonight as chairman of the Development Task Force with the Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. And I'd like to briefly discuss what's, what's led up to tonight's meeting. Fifteen years ago, in two thousand and seven, we were directed by the congregation to sell Madre de la Rosa's twenty unused acres, to raise funds to support ongoing ministry work in America and internationally, and to also help cover the healthcare and retirement cost of our many aging priests and brothers. So our committee responded by thoroughly researching our development options. We became convinced that selling the land to a home builder was a way to raise the necessary funds, protect the quiet sanctity of the Retreat Center, and be a good neighbor. We then spent several months talking to our near neighbors, to the leaders of Preserve Sierra Madre, and to other community groups about our vision. Out of those discussions came our commitments to pursue a neighborhood design that reflects the beautiful and varied nature that makes Sierra Madre so unique. New Urban West shared this vision, and working with them, we are now able to bring a plan before you that embodies these commitments. The pillars of the vision were incorporated into the memorandum of understanding between the Madre de la Rosa community and the city. Now, following a six-month review by the Planning Commission that resulted in many refinements, this fifteen-year path has finally led you. All of us who have been involved in this process are proud of the Meadows Plan. We hoped from the outset to create the most sustainable community in the history of Sierra Madre, and we have. We have also protracted Madre de la Rosa and our neighbors with a plan that is far more sensitive, and has lower impacts than what could be realized under institutional zoning. As someone who has benefited spiritually for over five decades, in my retreat experiences at Madre de la Rosa, and my interactions with the congregation, I look forward to realizing our vision when families move their new, into the new homes in the Meadows. I ask that you move us towards that exciting day with a positive vote tonight. I thank you very much for your service, and thank you for your informing.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Marta Salgado Niño, followed by Alice Wachello.
Good evening, council members. I'm Marta Salgado Niño, Director of Finance and Administration at Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. I just ask that you please help us to sustain and grow our Passionist ministries, including our food ministry, which helped the city to feed the seniors of Sierra Madre. And vote tonight in support of the Meadows Plan, and keeping our, our doors open at Madre de la Rosa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Alice Wachello, followed by Jean Warlick.
Good evening, city council. My name is Alice Wachello. I'm at four-one-seven West Sierra Madre Boulevard. Thank you for your time. I'll be brief. There is a statewide drought. The net-zero water arrangement does not ensure future water will be available, or if it is, at what cost, not at today's water prices. One hundred and one mature trees, ten, ten of them protected live oaks, all with root structures that stabilize the soil currently, protecting much of the northwest quadrant of the city from excessive storm runoff will be eliminated. Hopefully, this project will not be allowed to be developed. There are just too many dangers to persons' property and the city of Sierra Madre, and the ramifications that come from building these homes in that area. The people in Sierra Madre are going to see the repercussions of that, and after the developer is long gone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mike, I'm sorry, Jean Warlick, followed by Mike Cunningham.
Sorry. Good evening, council members. My name is Jean Warlick, and I have spoken here prior, at prior council meetings on behalf of Madre de la Rosa, and I do appreciate this opportunity, so thank you. For the past seventeen years, I have worked in the city of Sierra Madre at Madre de la Rosa as the Development Director. I've grown to love this beautiful city, and spend as much or more time here as I do in my own home. Sierra Madre very much reminds me of the close-knit community that I grew up in. The priests and staff at the Retreat Center work diligently to ensure that those who come to our spiritual haven here in Sierra Madre have a meaningful and rewarding experience. We offer this through our traditions of preaching hospitality and compassion. We live in a social, political, and religious climate that is all too frequently angry, polarized, and fragmented. So for us, going to work means being part of a team that supports and provides a place of refuge for those seeking the peace that comes with feeling a greater closeness to God. In the last two and a half years, working at Madre de la Rosa has also meant being part of a collaboration with the city of Sierra Madre in our food ministry to meet the challenges of critical food shortages resulting from COVID-19. We open our kitchens and prepare meals for seniors in Sierra Madre and other organizations in the San Gabriel Valley and Los Angeles County. This, this effort again exemplifies our traditions of hospitality and compassion, and is also an indication how we use what we have to help others. We are here tonight because we want to use something else that we have, undeveloped acres, to help others. You have heard how funds from this sale will be used to support our Passionist ministries for decades to come, and care for our senior religious. But we are also using these empty acres to create homes for families that want to live in Sierra Madre, and contribute positively to this community, again, for decades to come. You have a well-thought-out, environmentally sensitive plan before you this evening, and I humbly ask and encourage you to approve it. Thank you again for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Warlick.
Mr. Mayor, Mike Cunningham, followed by Jim Kelly.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mike Cunningham, Retreat Center Director at Madre de la Rosa Retreat, Passionist Retreat Center. As Retreat Director, my work involves making sure the men, women, and young adults who come to retreats at Madre de la Rosa experience peace and new spiritual insights during their stays with us. I'm also tasked with looking after the health of our ministry, and I'm happy to say that it's good with retreat bookings starting to come back to pre-COVID levels. And finally, we work to ensure the maximum good we can do with our facilities, hosting programs like recovery ministries, and working with the city to develop a food ministry that's filled a void in charitable meal services caused by the pandemic. Over the last six months, I've added Planning Commission groupie to my job description, representing the interests of Madre de la Rosa and our retreatants during public comments, and monitoring the commission's processes, it work through every imaginable issue related to the Meadows' proposal. In the end, it was well worth it. Despite the opposition doing all it could to convince them otherwise, the commissioners voted unanimously to approve the project with comments like, "This project should be an exciting example of what we should do," and "These homes are far and above," and "These homes will be more efficient than our existing housing stock." They are right, because both we and New Urban West worked together to make the Meadows exceptional. For our part, we donated three acres of our land for a new city park, and ensured the permanent protection of more of our open space holdings than was originally proposed. New Urban West did its part as well, making major concessions to address concerns raised by the Planning Commissioners. We hope that you will support the project this evening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Mayor, Jim Kelly, followed by Filippo Fenaro.
Council members, my name is Jim Kelly, and I'm a resident and a homeowner in Sierra Madre. I want to thank you for all the time you've put into considering this project. I'd like to quickly share a perspective on it that might be somewhat different. I served as Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees of a Catholic school and retreat center here in the San Gabriel Valley for almost twenty-five years, you've heard of it. And our mission there has always been to teach and care for the sons of the working poor. Over the years, as fewer and fewer folks chose religious vocations, we had to hire laypeople to fill many roles at a much higher cost. Our priests and brothers usually worked twelve hours a day for just room and board. Doesn't happen anymore with laypeople. As the years passed, we could no longer afford the basic costs of running the facility, and even the healthcare of the remaining aging priests and brothers was in jeopardy. The one thing we had was some unused land, private property that we owned. Our situation and that of Madre de la Rosa are very similar. So on two separate occasions, we worked with the city and sold land to developers that built homes around the campus, and some people in the neighborhood were very upset, as they just didn't want to see change. But that money enabled us to continue, as we do today, and to not lose the ability to do great service work for our community. On a particularly happy note, several of the sons of the folks that moved into those homes have attended our school, work in our ministries, and have become successful leaders in their own communities today. So please help the kind men and women of Madre de la Rosa to continue their ministry in our midst by approving this compatible community of new homes. I've seen firsthand that this does work as intended and desired by all the parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, Filippo Fenaro, followed by Father Bruno de Souza.
Good evening, council members. My name is Filippo Fenaro, President of the Board of Directors of the Sierra, of Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. By the way, I live in Pasadena, but my affiliation obviously is the head of the board. Tonight, after six months of rigorous review by the city Planning Commission, the proposal for the Meadows Bailey Canyon project has finally come before the elected officials. I pray that you give us approval for this project. Council members, this is the plan that we want. It is the plan that is best for the residents of Sierra Madre, as well as Madre de la Rosa. It is a low-impact development that, that benefits the entire community. The environmental impact report makes clear that the Meadows Plan will have far fewer noise, light, and traffic impacts on, on Madre de la Rosa and its neighbors than any other institutional uses could be built on the site under current zoning. For us, that means that our retreatants and others will be able to continue to enjoy the quiet contemplation of God's creation and Christ's passion on our grounds. As someone who has benefited from attending about twenty-five retreats at Madre de la Rosa, I cannot emphasize enough how important it is that New Urban West was sensitive to our needs, and those issues that were raised by the Planning Commission answers the concerns of our neighbors. The result is a plan for our Meadows property that will protect the retreat experience and ensure our continued ability to meet people's spiritual needs for many decades to come. The Meadows Plan is the best plan for us, our neighbors, and the city of Sierra Madre. I encourage you to approve it, approve it this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Father Bruno de Souza, followed by Gary Hood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Father Bruno de Souza. I am a Passionist priest, reside at seven hundred North Sunnyside Avenue, which is the Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center and Passionist Community as well. Been watching six months, the Planning Commission, for over every detail of the Meadows Plan during the last six months, as I said, has, it's been a quite experience for me. It was fascinating to watch a plan, I thought I already viewed to be exceptionally good, become even better, as your Planning Commissioners evaluated it in minute details. I just want to thank the Planning Commissioners at this time. Now you have before you a proposal for a neighborhood that will continue Sierra Madre's reputation as an exceptional place to live. It deserves your support, and I trust you will approve it tonight. I'm here tonight to speak for the retreatants who come to Madre de la Rosa every year to deepen their relationship with God and enjoy spiritual growth as a result. Our beautiful grounds are a peaceful island in this busy, highly urbanized San Gabriel Valley, and to protect the Madre de la Rosa retreat experience, we must protect the sanctity of our grounds. We want to do this. This has led to a very different kind of plan for the Meadows, one that uses landforms, landscaping, and good design to protect Madre de la Rosa's retreatants from noise, light, and views that would interrupt their solitude. The same can be said for the neighborhood around us. This plan considers their views, their quiet, and their streets, and is far less impactful than the institutional uses that could have been proposed for this site. And so in closing, thank you for thoughtfully considering the Meadows Plan, and I hope and pray for approving it tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Mr. Mayor Gary Hood, followed by Susan Neuhausen.
Good evening, Gary Hood, North Baldwin. And I hate getting up here almost as much as you guys hate seeing me come up here.[629.04][629.04](Laughter). Claire spoke about the trees. Over 100 trees are going to be cut down. But yet, with the four-color posters going out, it shows all the new houses with these big trees around it, looks beautiful. And then we're bragging, planting over 400 trees. We're cutting down 100 trees, and we're going to plant 400? Where are we going to get that kind of water? These trees that we're cutting down should remain there. Somebody that works at the, works up there said, "Well, I've never seen any bats." Well, if you go up there in the evenings, you can see where the bats are getting the Sierra Madre is a wildlife sanctuary city, and I really liked the video where they showed the deer. Do I see anything in the environmental impact report or anything about the wildlife? Zero. We don't care about the wildlife up there, but yet we showed some nice deer up there. That was sweet. But that's not the case. The wildlife has been ignored. And the fire situation? We plant 400 trees? Can you envision 140 mile-an-hour winds coming down out of the canyon with a fire right behind it? Those trees, those 400 trees are going to really feed the fire. It's important, and I'm trying to stick to the subject because I know what we're talking about, but we're ignoring and still going after the fact that our city attorney said that the Madre de la Rosa is not going to be able to continue with their food services and make any changes, and we're still going by that. And that's not true. They're going to be able to do whatever they need to to continue with the food services. That the religious prejudices that the community has gotten and received is really disappointing. As a member of this community, I feel like I'm being attacked and using religion, that we're attacking the church because they're religious. That is not the case. We're just looking for the truth. We're just looking for the facts. And I have something here I'll give you that is the truth, it is the facts, and where does it come from? It comes from the city council. And I'll part with, I'm not going to mention names, but when somebody gets up here to speak, especially when they're speaking about something important, for one of you to swing your head around and make faces at the person is really disappointing.
You seconds left.
And there you cut us off. It says I have four, three, two seconds left to talk, but you cut us off. It's very unfair.
Mr. Mayor Susan Neuhausen, followed by Tricia Cersei.
Good evening, Susan Neuhausen, 491 Grove Street, Sierra Madre. So tonight, I'd like to address some comments that you all made at some recent meetings regarding the Meadows Project-specific plan. So at the July 12 meeting, Mayor Goss, you commented that in 2015, you and others spent a lot of time on the general plan figuring out appropriate gross floor area to lot size ratios. And yet, the specific plan for the Meadows Project allows for houses that are 75% larger on a given lot size than allowed under the Sierra Madre General Plan and Municipal Code. And in fact, all 42 houses in New Urban West's proposal exceed what is, exceed this allowance except for one lot, and if that's only if they build the smallest house. So to me, the specific plan actually negates all the hard work that you, Mayor Goss, and the others did. The Meadows Project-specific plan is not consistent with our general plan. Mr. Parkhurst, at the July 12 council meeting, you mentioned that the project's houses would all be electric. Well, that's simply not the case. That claim was retracted by New Urban West long ago, and in fact, it only pertains to appliances, at least as shown on Mr. Frankel's slide. So for the sake of the environment and to ameliorate a major fire hazard, the houses should be 100% electric, including heating and cooling. But now, what are they doing? They're only encouraging all electric appliances because they fear they wouldn't be able to sell the houses. Moreover, they're only planning to do the minimum required for solar energy and only install panels sufficient for 60% of the estimated electric use. So much for sustainability. At the September 13 city council meeting, Mayor Goss, you commented on a meeting you had attended about the Paradise Fire, and that even with the highest standards of fire prevention, nothing can withstand infernos. So that reality should raise major concerns about the Meadows Project, where there will be 42 oversized houses on nine acres abutting drought-stricken Angeles National Forest land, and where there is not adequate space between houses to prevent the entire neighborhood from going up in flames in a matter of minutes. One last concern this evening. There was little discussion of the EIR by the planning commission, and in fact, it's my impression that they didn't consider the EIR to be within their area of expertise or oversight. So I ask that the five of you all take the time to read the EIR and the comments from residents within the last posted EIR. And there are numerous issues relate to safety and engineering that differ from the draft EIR, and there's been an egregious lack of input from important agencies such as the Los Angeles County Flood Control District and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I have sent you additional comments in the email I sent, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Neuhausen.
Mr. Mayor Tricia Cersei, followed by Natalie Shore-Petersen.
Good evening, Tricia Cersei, 734 Fairview Avenue. I'm here to ask that you defer any decision on the Meadows Project until after the upcoming election. Each of you was elected to represent the people of Sierra Madre, and the people have spoken. 1,300 of us signed the petition to get it on the ballot.
Ma'am, I have made it clear that I do not want discussion of anything other than the Meadows Project.
This is directly relevant to the Meadows Project.
I am sorry, it is not.
To plow ahead with this project, ignoring the will of your constituents, would be a betrayal of your oath of office. Your duty to represent the people who elected you and have clearly said that we want a voice in this fundamental change to our town.
I'm going to have to shut off the podium. I'm sorry.
This isn't about one property owner's rights. It has to do with infringing on the rights, safety, and well-being of this community. Bailey Canyon, Logan's Park, does not belong to the House.
I'm going to take a five-minute recess. I want everyone to leave the room, and we will return in at 8:35. Okay. Sorry for the interruption. Ms. Cersei, I would like to grant you your three minutes if you could agree to stick on the topic of the agenda. Would you be willing to do that? And I've made the determination that's not true, so you're just going to have to abide by the rules of this procedure. Well, so here we are. I offered you your three minutes. Sorry. Everyone is biding by these rules except you and two others. I made it clear after the other two that it wouldn't be accepted after that.
This is directly relevant to the project, the measure in question.
Okay.
The judge told that your comments about, in your ballot argument, were to say that this project is more vastly preferable to the measure.
Okay. I have never made any comments about the Meadows Project in anything. This is the first for us. You're confusing me maybe with somebody on the planning commission. But I'm not going to engage in a debate here. I've made my decision. I'm the presiding officer, I get to do that. I really don't relish this. I would like to have you come up and speak about the Meadows Project. I've heard you before. I know that you're very articulate and eloquent, and I think that you should take advantage of that, but if you choose not to, you don't have to. Madam City Clerk, could you please announce our next person?
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Natalie Shore-Petersen, followed by Gary Buss.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Shore-Petersen. I am here on behalf of my mother, Queenie Shore, who is a resident and homeowner of 501 Crestvale Drive, one of the approximately 10 homes immediately along the southern boundary of the proposed project. I want to address what my family considers a fatal flaw in the documents before you. The entire project is predicated on siding the bulk of the utilities directly on the other side of the walls that separate these properties on the southern boundary from the monastery property. There has been no study of the existing non-contiguous walls that separate the properties at a lower elevation from the field approximately 10 feet higher. The issue is whether these walls can withstand the added force of pumps, pipes, water retention basins, and other infrastructure that is to be clustered below the ground immediately on the other side of these walls below and during and after construction. This is a huge unanswered question. My family is neither for nor against this project. However, if it is to move forward, it needs to be contingent on an analysis by an independent licensed structural engineer. This needs to be a requirement stipulated in the EIR mitigation measures, specific plan, and development agreement. This is for everyone's protection on both sides of these walls and not just those living immediately south of this boundary. It also pertains to our entire city, you know, which will be taking responsibility for the park that will be right there as well. So I am very grateful that your conversation earlier touched on this issue, and I urge you to lock in this kind of a study in these documents prior to taking any action on them. And if you are inclined to approve this project, a few more weeks to address this is a very modest investment for a much better long-term outcome, again, not just for the residents along the southern boundary, but for the entire community of Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shore.
Mr. Mayor Gary Bussio, followed by Robert Jode.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you for a couple of minutes. My name is Gary Bussio. I reside at 630 Fairview Avenue, just five houses west of Sunnyside. I object to this project, and I'll tell you some reasons why. Eighteen years ago, when my family, my wife, and my then-young children moved into Sierra Madre, we could have moved into anywhere in Los Angeles County. We moved into Sierra Madre because of the peaceful tranquility that it offers and the peaceful tranquility that would offer my family. This project would deny that peaceful tranquility to my family. Where we live is in direct path on Fairview, making a left onto Sunnyside, where I think the vast majority of the traffic would flow. You're talking about a lot of traffic on a daily basis. Yes, some traffic will come up Sunnyside, but going to and from this project would directly abut our house, and that peaceful tranquility that I wanted for the remainder of my life would be gone. I'm not going to rehash all the other issues involved, the fire issues, the water issues. We've rehashed those over and over again. I would ask the council to defer this decision so that you have a complete understanding of the ramifications on the community. I've heard individuals come up and say they discussed this project with the community. I've heard individuals come up and say they discussed this project with the community. No one ever knocked on my door, not New Urban West, not any of the Passionists. No one ever came to my door and discussed this project with me. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the allegation that the opponents of this project are discriminating against Catholics because of their religion. That's not true. I am Catholic, went to Catholic schools all my life. My son went to St. Rita. I was very involved at St. Rita. My son just graduated from Loyola High School. My wife works at Dolores Mission, probably the poorest parish in all of Los Angeles, in the middle of Boyle Heights, where homeboys started. That's where my wife works. They raise money because they work hard. They fundraise. They have golf tournaments. I understand the Passionists want to continue their service, and I applaud them for that, and they should, but I think there are other methods that they can utilize to raise funds for their elderly and for their other missions. I've done it myself. It can be done. And to approve a project simply because an entity needs money is not the reason to approve a project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bossio.
Mr. Mayor, Robert Jourdain, followed by Alice Elliott.
Hi, Robert Jourdain, this is Circle Drive. The planning commission has done the hard work. They forwarded the project to you with a recommendation for approval. They've taken many hours of public comment, and the planning commission is as informed as anyone on this project, yet people are calling you uninformed. Well, how do they know that when this is your first meeting discussing the Meadows project? There have been insinuations made against city staff in the past and the city council taking bribes or being in the pockets of the developers. This is unbecoming of Sierra Madre residents, and I don't want you to be bullied by that. If you take the planning commission's, they say if you take the planning commission's recommendation that you're uninformed, but somehow they think that going to a vote of the people, which may know, who may know nothing about the project, is a better position to make a decision.
Stay away from that issue, please.
And I edited a lot to remove that topic. There's another issue I want to discuss, which is the two open space lots to the north. Hopefully, you received my arguments for why those properties should be held in the city's name. These lots were offered as concessions and agreed to be given to the city. They're not gifts which can simply be taken back. These properties will help the city meet the goals and objectives of the general plan, including expanding parkland. The city council has a duty to meet these objectives if possible. In this case, it's been handed to you on a platter. Any privacy concerns Passionists have can be addressed when the conservation easements are created, before they're recorded with the Sierra Madre Mountains Conservancy. Mudslide concerns should not be a problem since the county built the Sunnyside debris basin and the diversion channel in Bailey Canyon fifty years ago. I hope you will approve this project because it's a good balance for Sierra Madre. And since I edited and I have time left, so on parks, this park cuts Sierra Madre's park deficit in half according to the Trust for Public Lands metric of being within ten minutes, a ten-minute walk of a park. The trees, the trees are privately owned, most of them planted by the Passionists. Removing trees is not prohibited, they have to be mitigated. Trees don't have rights. Planting almost 500 trees is a good thing, and since when in Sierra Madre do we have people arguing against planting trees and having parks? I mean, this is ridiculous. I don't know what's going on. Wildlife, something's gonna be built on the Meadows either way, whether it's institutional or whether it's this housing project or whether it's 68 homes or mansions, who knows? But there's 700,000 acres to 500 feet to the north for the wildlife, and they will be in and around these homes just like they're around the Passionist property. The traffic increase is gonna be about one car every two minutes. I think everyone can put up with that.
About eight seconds.
Okay. And that was the first issue that brought me into this topic and when I realized that there's a lot of public hysteria over this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jourdain.
Mr. Mayor, the next and final speaker card is from Alice Elliott.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I'm Titty Council. I'm a new resident of Sierra Madre. We've been here for a year, and we moved here from Northern California. And in Northern California, there are several, there is, well, close to us, there was an agency called the Peninsula Open Space Trust, POST. It's a nonprofit organization, and they will, they were buying land, and they continue to do that, and they have groups of people who participate in this endeavor to keep more and more land and open spaces that become, becomes available. In two of the planning commission meetings I came to, a woman came forward and read a letter that had been submitted to the plant, to someone in the city, offering to buy this land from the Passionists for open space. And I would implore you to be brave and bold and go and do something that no one else is saying. Look forward and find a way to keep this land open. Yes, we're putting part of it into open space, but the whole thing is open right now, and once it's gone, it is gone. In the next 50 years, are you gonna look back and say, "I did a good thing"? Or are you gonna go back and say, "Well, you know, we did what we had to do"? Anyway, I would really encourage you to pursue and find out this letter. I don't know who the woman was, she came to these meetings, but there, somewhere, there is an organization out there that's already expressed interest in purchasing this land.
Ma'am, can I have a question?
Yes.
That was the Peninsula Open Space.
Trust.
Trust.
Oh, and I want to read you a couple of things.
They're located where?
Well, they're located in Palo Alto, and I just wanna, so from a recent letter for them, because I have time. They say, "Open space is essential to all of us. Our local lands have been fragmented by decades of development. We strive to safeguard critical habitats that protect our air and water and provide species of all types with a space they need to thrive," which is what we have up there, right? You need lots of room.
Could I ask you to repeat what you said, that you saw someone make a statement or you saw a letter?
No, there was a woman. She's, I don't know her name. She came forward twice at two separate meetings, and she would refer to this letter.
I see.
So she knew, she knew of it somehow. She was involved in some, anyway. And just one more, let me just finish. And then they thank their donors. So many people participate. Thanks for our generous donors and partners. More than 3,300 acres have been protected from development in this critical area of the Bay, the Southern Bay Area, and we are working to expand those connections and restore the vital landscape. So wouldn't it be great that Sierra Madre could do that, too? Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
It's only 10 to 9. I think that's some sort of a record. I remember being here 2014, councilmember Azmendi was here with me, and I think we did a couple that went to midnight. We had people outside.
I'm sure the planning commission is jealous.
Yeah, yeah, I think they are. So we, we'll bring it back up to council now, and I think the first thing I'd like to do is exhaust all questions that we might have still of staff or New Urban West, and then I think we could probably begin deliberations. I do not know if we're gonna, I doubt if we're gonna be able to make a decision tonight. We'll see. But if we don't, then we could delay the, extend the public hearing to a date, a certain date, maybe next week or something like that, and finish it. So I would like to just continue where we left off before public comment and see if you guys have any other questions particularly related to possible comments, the comments that we just received, I think would be most appropriate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Krebs.
I had this on my list, but it was also brought up in public comment. I would like to hear a little bit about how the evolution of the open space designation for the parcels north of the Retreat Center, and it is true, as Mr. Gergi said about, Jourdain said about, you know, the LOIs treatment is, you know, is different than it is currently in, contemplated in the development agreement. I'm not sure I quite follow how that, how that developed, and I don't know if someone could speak a little bit about concerns about who would hold the easement and concerns about the city holding title to the property.
Councilmember Krebs, this is a rather complex story. So in the MOU, it's true that it was contemplated that the upper two most parcels that are gonna be designated for open space were gonna be held by the city. At that time, city staff was hoping that the city would take it, and then they would give it to the Sierra Madre Conservancy or someone else. And when that conversation was happening, if I remember this correctly, the Sierra Madre Conservancy didn't want it. And so staff thought about the maintenance of that site, and staff felt that it's probably not in the city's interest to hold it as the owner because they didn't want any other liability or any maintenance duties associated with owning it, with ownership, with an ownership interest in that site. So instead, what they said is, "We'll have the Passionists own it, and we'll just have the Passionists record a conservation easement over that site." And the conservation easement would essentially do the same thing, which is preventing development at that site. And that's what was recorded in the development agreement. That's not necessarily what has to happen, but that's how that evolved with respect to those two topmost parcels. Now, that's the hillside open space. That's not what happened for the, for the Retreat Center open space. Would you like me to talk about that as well, because that's a different issue?
No, I think I was primarily concerned, but I guess where I am not following is that, I guess the city was concerned about owning it if someone wasn't going to take the conservation easement, the implication being that whoever held the easement would be responsible for the maintenance. But now the Passionists are gonna own it, and the city's gonna have the conservation easement, but that's not gonna be our, the city's responsibility to maintain it. So could you maybe explain the difference there?
Right. So the conservation easement does not require the city to do anything to that property. The property, all liability associated with that property is going to remain with the property owner, and our conservation easement just allows us to enforce, or rather prevent, any type of development should development be proposed at that site. Now, I'll add, though, that I believe subsequently, and Director Gonzalez can correct me if I'm wrong, but subsequently, we did reach out again, per the planning commission's recommendation, to the Sierra Madre Mountains Conservancy, who sent us a letter saying that they would only take possession of it if the city owned the property. So they would, I could look up the letter to confirm the point, but I believe they said that the city would own it and they would have a conservation easement, but that they wouldn't take ownership of the property, if that makes sense.
Is that similar to what arrangement we have now with respect to the trail and, you know, pieces of property that the Sierra Madre Mountain Conservancy has interest in? I'm just, I guess I just am still not quite following what the role of the mountain conservancy would be if the city were to own it and why we would have, why we might have been okay with that, and somehow that wouldn't provide the same maintenance and liability concerns.
So the concern there is, I don't, and so I don't know what the Sierra Madre Mountains Conservancy does for the other parcels in the city, but with respect to this parcel, the idea is that in the future, potentially, the city could develop that site if it chose. If it's the owner, then maybe in the future, a future city council can come and say, "I wanna develop that site to the extent development is possible." But if a conservation easement was held by the conservancy, then the conservancy could enforce that against the city and say, "No, city, you can't." And that's why they wanna keep the conservation easement with a third party as opposed to keeping the conservation easement with the city, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
And I'm happy to try to explain that again if that wasn't the clearest explanation.
Seems like others might not have, I think, I think you've answered my question, but if others want clarification, please jump in.
Any takers? Good. Well, I have, do you want to get follow-up questions?
Not on that, but you go ahead.
Actually, I have several, and they're kind of unrelated, but I was taking notes from public comment. I take issue. I mean, we're losing 100 trees, including 11 mature coast live oaks. That's a very significant thing. And I know that there are some trees under the development, there are some, is effort to save some of the trees that are living up there. To what extent can we save some more of these trees? And if we can't, I mean, I'm looking at the plan, and it says that we're gonna replace the trees with trees that are no smaller than a 24-inch box. 24-inch box tree was, what, about eight or 10 feet high, something like that? So I'm wondering if it's possible we could maybe put in a little bigger tree than that, maybe get a little extra jumpstart for the trees that we're putting in since we're taking out mature trees, because I think that's certainly a valid criticism. We are a tree city. We are very proud of our urban forest. So I'd like to get an answer on that. And then I have some unrelated questions, I could get an answer on that first.
Can I add to that?
Yes, you can.
For the answer is, we've heard that, I think, 111 trees are being removed. Do we know, I'd like to know how many are staying and anything about those trees? I don't remember seeing that, maybe it's just I haven't.
Maybe there are some, right?
Yeah, and I just, I just don't remember the number.
Maybe the applicant could respond.
Certainly, Mayor Goss. So we did a comprehensive analysis. We had a firm called Bright View go out to the site, and we know that, to the extent feasible, we wanna work to save as many trees as we can. And so the analysis demonstrated that there were very few trees that were quality candidates for relocation for a variety of reasons. And so our analysis is generally, when there's a less than 50% likelihood of survival, we would rather replace it with a tree of adequate size. And if the council determines that you would like larger trees, certainly we will have larger accent trees and kind of disperse throughout the site. So if the council determines that they would like larger trees, perhaps to replace the 11 oaks with a larger diameter box tree, we would absolutely consider that.
Yeah, I think the spirit, the spirit of your question, I felt, is that was not for relocation, but keep them on site, and that's kind of what I heard.
Yeah.
Especially, I mean, I can't get over, and maybe it's sentimental, that Morton fig. It's just, maybe, it's the, yeah, it's tough, and I could see it's right in the middle. I'm looking at the map right now, and I just wish that tree could be saved any way possible.
I think we heard earlier testimony, that's one that has a very low chance of transplant.
Of moving.
And leaving that there would just completely disrupt the whole flow of the Upper Street, I believe. I don't wanna belabor the point, but I think that, you know, we're here to represent everybody in the community, and I think there's a very widely-held view in this city that, you know, trees are really important to us. So I think, I like to hear that you're interested in putting in bigger trees, that's good. But there's really no wiggle room for you guys in terms of eliminating the 100 trees that you're planning to eliminate? Is that, are you, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I mean, unfortunately, we will not be able to keep those trees, given the masquerade condition of the site, but again, completely respect and appreciate the desire to plant large trees, and also, we have evaluated, there are three candidates for preservation in the, in the park area that we're gonna further evaluate once we do additional soil testing. So there are, including one oak in that park area, so, but unfortunately, the others cannot be retained.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on the tree question, so are, there are a whole bunch of Chinese elms that line Sunnyside, and I'm counting them kind of from treetops, and I'm thinking, I'm seeing more than 30 just on Sunnyside. Are those all going? Is that like the bulk of it, the Chinese elms?
That's correct, and it's my understanding, though, the Chinese elm is not a, not a protected tree in the city, but that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's not directly with trees, but it's related. Can I go ahead and ask a question? There was a question brought up during public, during the public hearing about mitigation measures and the planning commission recommendations. How and when does that incorporate, get incorporated? So procedurally, what do we expect? How do we expect to see all of that?
So I'm sorry, was the question, how are the planning commission recommendations incorporated into the project?
Mitigation measures as well as the planning commission recommendations? How, how is that going to be implemented? How, how is that going to be implemented? Procedurally, what do we expect, what can we expect to see and how that is shared with the public and also the city council?
I would say if there's specific, in this case, possibly a tree that could be a candidate to be saved, then that could be incorporated before the Planning Commission does a condition.
So, with all of, let's say, like I'm looking at, I almost said channel, slide 18 with all of the mission, and again, some of the mitigation measures and the EIR, all of those. The tree was an example, but how do we see all of these 25 refinements reflected? How do we see all the mitigation measures reflected in the EIR?
Yeah, the, so, all the edits made by the Planning Commission are currently reflected in the packet before you. So, there should be a redline version of both the specific plan and the development agreement. And the redline, the redline, for those who have packets at home, if it's black and white, the underlined portion reflects the changes made by the Planning Commission.
So in response to that question, is that you will see all of, we see all of that in the redline version?
Correct.
Just to follow up, I mean, I think part of this is, part of the discussion we had earlier about certain of the continuing evaluations and studies that I think the developers brought up and that we've talked specifically about, those are not necessarily reflected in these documents, but as we talked about before, they're going to need to be presented as part of the approval process in the Phase Two approvals. Like, I think, like the geographical topography and, you know, the, about the retaining walls and the issue brought up by the Crestvale resident.
Right, and I'll remind the council, if the council is interested, we can go through Exhibit I of the development agreement, which lists out sequentially the responsibilities of all the parties involved in the development agreement to kind of see what this will look like chronologically going forward. If that's something the council wishes to see.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd be interested in seeing that, if you can take the time to do that.
Yes, we should.
And Mr. City Attorney, if you could, I know that some of these are kind of broad, like, you know, we'll submit an application for X or, you know, what have you. But if, to the extent that that process would include some of the things that, you know, I think the developers mentioned and citizens have brought up as concerns, that that process would necessarily include, you know, the hydrology surveys and things like that? It would be helpful, to the extent that you can, to just highlight that, like, oh, the application for X would necessarily involve presenting, you know, these types of analysis or studies.
Understood, yeah. I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Director Gonzalez on explaining this then.
And I'm happy to, if we do end up continuing this, I'm happy to have more specifics, you know, give you, I don't want to put you on the spot because that's not necessarily part of the preparation for tonight.
So the first task. So the development agreement contemplates an annual report. So, within 30 days of the one-year anniversary, the effective date of the development agreement, and continuing annually thereafter, until the date on which a certificate of occupancy is issued for the last single-family residential unit of the project, meaning all the homes are built, the developer will have to submit an annual report. And that annual report is going to be considered by the city council. That annual report will include a number of different things, including an update on the recordation of the conservation easements and lot tie affidavit, that's for the congregation, application for subsequent land use entitlements, like the development, like the designer view permit and the tentative tract map, design dedication development of public parks, so we'll receive an annual update about that, formation of the Community Facilities District, net zero water, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Can you scroll a little further down? So the city council will have to consider that annual report and make a determination of whether or not it complies in good faith with the terms of this agreement. The developer also has to submit a complete tentative tract map application and pay all required application fees 24 months after the effective date of the development agreement. And maybe, Director Gonzalez, if you could point out some of the documents that would have to be submitted as part of a complete tentative tract map application?
So, typically, a grading plan, including, which they already have, is a site survey of all existing trees and utilities on that property as background information. And then the division of land, which is the, basically, the tentative tract map itself.
So this is, so now we are already approaching Phase Two of this. Because Phase One are all the entitlements before you and Phase Two are going to be the subsequent entitlements. So this tentative tract map is part of the Phase Two approvals. Also, part of the Phase Two approvals, the developer will have to submit a site plan for utilities. Developer shall submit a complete designer view application for all 42 homes.
Can we go back to the utilities point? I mean, because that was one of the points made by one of the public comments, is that the utilities, at least presently, seem to be concentrated along that lower southern border. Would part of the utilities plan not just be, you know, locating them, but also, you know, showing that that was going to be safe and supportable?
So, certainly, it's part of the same process of the tentative tract map. That's when thorough engineering will be conducted to evaluate the proposed retention basin and how much water that will hold and how much water will be released over time through the infiltration process.
Councilmember Krebs, may I follow up on that? So, we're looking at that third, third row, right? And it cross-references Section 4A I of the development agreement. And part of that is the completion of the off-site improvements discussed in Section 4I will be made as a condition of any tentative tract map approval. So does that mean that the tract map can't be submitted until there's some kind of approval about the off-site?
No, no, the tentative tract map can be submitted. And a condition of approval, so, if it's approved, then a condition to the tentative tract map is going to be that the off-site improvements have, the rights for the off-site improvements have to be secured. And rather, I'm sorry, the off-site improvements have to be completed. And so the first off-site improvement has to be, has to start, and we'll go through it, but it'll have to start at the, at the construction of the, or pulling the first building permit for the first home. And it has to be, all the off-site improvements have to be completed for, I believe it's, yeah, it's either, I think it's the certificate of occupancy for the 11th home. We'll go through it here, but.
And there's 24 months to get that done from the effective date?
24 months from the effective date, correct.
Thank you, thank you.
They have to, they have to secure the rights to begin that off-site improvement within 24 months. And the tentative tract map application also has to be submitted within 24 months. So this is.
Go ahead.
So this is all part of Phase Two again, all happening roughly within a maximum of a two-year period. And those are the developers' responsibilities, you can see there. I just mentioned that the developer has to obtain the necessary approvals from LA County to commence off-site improvements to reline Carter Avenue. The congregation also has responsibilities within that two-year period, the 24-month period. The congregation has to submit a complete tentative tract map application and pay all required application fees. And again, that's for that division of the retreat center lot into the open space for the retreat center and then the one that they're going to retain. The city then is going to hire a mutually-approved qualified third-party consultant to review such, to review and process any such plans because likely, staff can't take on that burden. The number, the number of staff we have today can't take on the burden of reviewing all those documents. So we'll need outside assistance. The congregation will execute a lot tie affidavit for the two subdivided parcels to make sure they can't be sold separately. The developer will submit a site plan, planting plan, and plan for conceptual amenities to Community Services Commission within 18 months after the approval of tentative tract map.
May I?
Yes.
So, is it contemplated that when the site plan is submitted, at that point in time, we would have like engineering reports regarding the retaining wall on the southern border and things of that nature? Is that part of a site plan?
That would be part of the entirety of the packet. That would include the site plan, yes.
So it'd be at that time?
Yes.
That would be due, okay.
And when we, when we have that, then we'll be able to evaluate alternative routes of the utilities? I mean, it's interesting that it, they would come across there from a east-to-west perspective and not go up Sunnyside there. It'd be interesting to kind of understand where the utilities are and why putting them right where the retaining wall is and where the water retention basin is, just seems, it does seem like it's a potential area of failure.
So the utilities that you're referring to is the underground retention basin specifically?
So, that's where I'm unclear, is that I don't know what, where all the utilities are going. So, the water mains, the electricity, the gas, all of that, where are those going? Are those going in the same area? Is it just the perforated pipe that's there and the, basically, the rock that's going to help percolate it down into the soil? Or are there other utilities in there and could that then pose an additional risk to the residents that are south of the property?
It's my understanding that the utilities will be, it's part of the infrastructure on the existing street system. So sewer, water, potable water would be on the individual streets. The area to the south below the park is really the retention basin, that's water capture to comply with LID requirements for the entirety of the project site. And if we can get further clarification from the applicant.
We're talking utilities, we're just talking the stormwater retention.
Right.
Okay, that's a helpful clarification.
Councilmember Parker, I know we just received this like six days ago, the updated specific plan, but there are maps that show wastewater, water main and the cable TV and electric grid. That's on page 68, figure 4-9. So it's not super obvious or easy to read, but it's, some of it's there, I think. They're showing trenches and all kinds, yeah.
So I wanted to pursue another line of questioning, unrelated to all this. So, right now, the passionists have the right to develop their property on institutional development. And I heard somebody throw a number around of up to 275,000 square feet. I don't know where that number came from, but I wrote it down from comments. I guess I'd like clarification, just, just, what is the, like, from a, I don't know, density, traffic flow, worst-case scenario, what's the largest possible institutional development could be built there?
So, that figure came from what's permitted under institutional, is permitted lot coverage of 35% on that 17.3-acre parcel.
35% of the 17 acres?
Right. Would approximately, approximate 275,000 square feet of building area.
Okay, now, does that mean it could be separate buildings or it all has to be one building or?
It could be separate buildings and aggregated across that property.
Because I heard someone talking about possibly an assisted living facility where they had like cabanas, like little, specific little dwelling units that are separate. Okay, so that is the, that is an option that they have without any action by us, right?
It's a use that would go, would have to be approved by the Planning Commission through review.
Right, okay.
And that's the alternative that's contemplated in the environmental impact report?
That's correct, yeah.
35%, coverage?
35%, yeah. And also, Mr. Oliver asked a question about the widening of Carter because obviously, the point of the widening of Carter was to get a, an untenable egress-ingress situation, you know, functional. But what about the rest of Carter, the traffic studies that we've looked at, how far does that go? Does that go all the way to?
Oak Crest.
Oak Crest? Okay, so what about from there all the way back to like Auburn or even Baldwin?
Would not be contemplated as part of this effort.
Okay, so that's not, that's not something that we've actually evaluated, okay? And we've evaluated traffic going down Sunnyside. I recall looking at those studies and I think that did encapsulate Fairview and?
It does.
Grandview?
Yes.
Yes, but, okay. And I wanted to get a follow-up on the question I heard earlier. Could you be more specific? How, who does and how does the actual function of monitoring these mitigations? Is this something that we do? Is this something third parties do? Is this something that the applicant does? Who's going to make sure that the things that need to, because there are a wide variety of mitigations here, from Native American Indian relics to other archaeological issues, to all sorts of things. So I can't imagine that we have expertise in that. We'd have to bring in outside parties who make sure that happens.
So the city staff would have to coordinate some of these efforts.
So that's going to fall under your purview then?
It could, many of, if there's discoveries, then yes, we'll have to be involved. But the mitigation will outline who would be the expert to monitor or mitigate or to follow through with mitigation efforts.
So I'm assuming we don't have to reinvent the wheel on these things? We could, we could maybe follow what other cities do with development projects to develop a protocol or something?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry, that's.
That's what I've got. I got just one other, one other question. Mr. Yao, who lives up on Syracuse Drive, I was talking with another person, as I mentioned earlier, who lives up there with a rear, and he asked if we could actually maybe paint a more, more clear picture of what his view would be looking up out, rather than the side view that we're given in these drawings. Is that possible? Can we, at least conceptually, what, because I know there's going to be an empty area with parks, so he's not going to be, he's not going to have a view block, but there's going to be a berm. So is it going to be, he's looking up, how much of the mountains is he going to be able to see while we're trying to protect his privacy?
Yeah, probably a sightline, possibly a cross-section of sightline study could be prepared to show what that would look like and what that sightline would, distance would look like towards a view of the mountains.
Did the Planning Commission take this up? I watched the meetings, I don't recall this.
They, they talked about sightline studies and, or views, view sheds to the mountains behind, but not specific sightline studies from individual lots.
Mr. Mayor, to answer and impart your question, the Planning Commission meetings that I attended or watched, originally, the plan was to have a large, large berm with large trees or hedges on that. And part of the process with the Planning Commission was, you know, very much reducing that barrier. And I think the current contemplated smaller berm with lower vegetation was definitely, from my perspective, a result of the conversations that the Planning Commission had about, about that with concerns about sightlines. But no, I don't think they specifically asked for the view that you're contemplating. And as, as a follow-up to that, just procedurally, I know I've been kind of focused on that, but would that, would the final plan for that buffer, that berm, be something that we would be locking in now as part of this process? But, or is this, that also something that would be part of, one of the many things that would be considered as part of these Phase Two approvals?
So if the berm is part of the park, then the park designs would be governed by the Community Services Commission's recommendation.
Well, it is part of the park, right?
And so, and so, yes, then, then it, then it would, it would be a combination of what the, what is in the specific plan and the recommendations made by the Community Services Commission.
So, Community Services Commission then has some latitude there in terms of interpreting that?
Correct.
And then, the park has to be built, it doesn't have to be built right at the beginning, but around kind of like the first third or quarter of the project. It's 11 units, I want to say?
No, so it's, yeah.
Or is it halfway, is it 20 units? I can't remember.
Right, so, two things there. The park design, the Planning Commission really created a third phase of this project. We talked about the first phase, which is this, the second phase. We talked about the first phase, which is this, the second phase, which is the tentative track map and design review permit. The planning commission really created a third phase. And the third phase is this period that we were, we were just looking at. Eighteen months after the tentative track map approval. The applic- the, the developer has to submit all these plans regarding the park and there's going to be a whole other set of hearings just to consider the park. Uh, and so that's gonna happen eighteen months after the tentative track map. And then once we have that design, the developer is going to begin construction and turn over the park at the twenty, once the twenty-second home uh, is built. And by that ti- by that time, we'll also have a CFD up and running, uh, and a community facilities district that can support the park. And.
So do we know what homes are gonna be built first?
Uh.
I believe it was, why don't we let the applicant answer that question? I believe it was going to be the, the west side properties along sunny side.
So the phasing has not been precisely determined yet exactly which lots will be constructed first. We would anticipate though that i- it is typical to have model homes closest to the entry of the community. So you wouldn't want a buyer driving all the way through a community to go to a model home on, all the way on the top of lot A. So our expectation with that, it would be lots one through four would be the most likely candidates, although that is subject to change.
So, um, we're looking at kind of from a risk mitigation perspective and water to, to the houses on, on Crest Vale. And twenty houses, you're, you're gonna have to be into street, i- i- into one of the three cross-streets, A, B, or C at that point, right? You're gonna have to have a good portion of those built before there's the turnkey of the park.
So, Councilmember Parker, so the, the, the stormwater, again, the only utilities we're thinking about in the park is, is the stormwater system. Um, the location is actually required by LA County Flood Control. So that, the location of that storm facility actually mirrors the existing drainage condition. And generally speaking, agencies want the future drainage to mirror the existing drainage. They don't want you to unnaturally change the existing natural drainage course in the property. So, the storm drain system will be fully evaluated well before construction. There will be a geotechnical report associated with the tentative track map and the design review. It's not in our interest at all to design a system that will cause damage to adjacent property owners. We, we can't escape liability for damage we cause to off-site owners. So we have every reason to make sure that our investigations are very thorough prior to construction.
So, so that, that water retention, that stormwater retention is gonna be one of the first things that, that'll be built because you have to have that before you put any, any properties on, is that right?
Correct. All of the stormwater that's generated on the new housing has to be fully treated.
The third phase that you referenced, is that subject to the five-meeting rule or is it its own five-meeting rule or?
There, there are separate rules uh, for that third phase is what we're calling it. Uh, for the review of the public park, just give me a moment here. The uh, the community services commission shall hold no more than three public hearings. And that's, and that's gonna be in the development agreement, that's not, that's not subject to state law, to review, discuss, and provide their recommendations. Those three meetings do not include a potential appeal to the city council, which would be its own hearing.
And are we limited in?
The, the, the development agreement does not contemplate a limit on the, on the city council's hearings.
So we still, do you have more questions?
I have a couple. Just quickly, um, so we talked a little bit about the um, the sustainability features. And I know we talked already about the utilities and, and electrification. We also, I think the, the presentation touted the gray water system, but I noted in the specific plan, it's not really an obligation. It, it sort of says where available, it doesn't sort of say, it actually says where available gray water or recycled water should be used for landscaping. So I'm not sure if there's a disconnect between sort of the, the way I took the presentation was that the, the gray water systems would be in place for the, for the um, irrigation of the, of the, of the yards, but, but that's not, doesn't seem to be an actual requirement.
Let me have the representative respond to that.
Councilmember Crebs, I think that term kind of co-mingles a couple of different concepts. So one is recycled water. So that is not available. Perhaps in the future, the city has a purple pipe project or some capital improvement that would make that available. So I think the where available really is related to recycled water. With respect to gray water, um, those systems will be installed in the homes for things like faucets, um, so in the bathroom. So we fully intend on doing that within the home, but we can't control the availability of other, other infrastructure like recycled water. So that, I, I think there, that, that just got a little bit mixed up.
Okay, I'd like to see that get, get separated and cleaned up because I think that's a nice, that's a nice feature. And frankly, I'd like them to come and put that in my house, please.
Any other questions?
Ma- Mayor, would you, would you like to complete the schedule I, the review of schedule I, the responsibilities or you think we've exhausted that?
Uh, repeat, I'm.
Oh, no problem. Uh, early, earlier, we had schedule I up on the screen and that was a list of responsibilities. Would you like to exhaust that list or do you think we've exhausted that conversation regarding?
A good question. What do you think, folks?
I, I'd like to finish it off.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Uh, so, we had just talked about that the community service, community services commission will consider the conceptual plan for the park. Uh, next, the developer is going to commence construction on the off-site improvements. Again, prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Developer will pay all public facilities.
So on, on the off-site improvements, is that Carter?
That's Carter.
And is that, is there anything else other than Carter in that off-site improvement?
I, I believe it's, I believe it's just Carter, the expansion and realign it.
And the sidewalk.
And the sidewalk. The developer will pay all public uh, facilities fees, so those are just the impact fees and they always pay that prior to issuance of each respective building permit. Uh, s- those fees include, um, well, they, they don't include, these are different. The, the art and public places fee is a separate fee, different than the public um, facilities impact fees. And developer will pay a, a park facility fee in lieu of donating land. Again, all these payments will be made upon applying for building permits. Question?
Would, would that be like our Quimby fees and that, that fee schedule or something different?
Uh, the Quimby fee is the park facility fee.
Okay.
Right.
But because the, the development's got a park, they still have to pay, there is a fee on, on top of that.
Correct, we had negotiated that that park would be um, in addition to whatever they'd have to pay. Uh, developer will also pay the net zero water payments uh, prior to is- city's issuance of a building permit associated with each residential unit. So same, same deal. All the payments are being, uh, are being received upfront for each individual unit.
So it's just, is it just a simple division? Like, you know, if, if the total water payment is nine hundred and odd thousand dollars, then it's just that divided by?
Pro rata, yes, correct.
So, if, if not, if the entirety of the development is not developed, th- those amounts would go down. I mean, which makes sense to me with respect to the impact fees and all of that, but
Correct.
I mean, the, the water fee is actually a negotiated number.
Uh, correct. It con- it contemplates, if, if the development agreement is approved as, as written, it contemplates forty-two units. And um, if forty-two units are not constructed, then the city would, wouldn't recoup all the money contemplated under the agreement. This, so the city will contract with a third-party inspector to inspect the public improvements associated with the project.
And who pays for the cities? Like, when, there's another uh, obligation of the city to hire a, a third-party consultant. Is that, is that covered by our, you know, our setting of the fees and things like that or is that on top of that and that's just our obligation under the development agreement?
That, that's in addition to everything that has to be, already be paid. So.
So the city pays for those, those third-party contractors?
The ci- the city pays and it'll be reimbursed by the applicant.
Oh, okay.
And so the congregation shall record a conservation easement in favor of the city within sixty days after issuance of the first building permit for the project. And the.
Just a, a question on that, is, is that realistic? Can, can the easement be negotiated and signed within sixty days? Sometimes those things can be.
Oh.
It depends, depends on complexity of conservation easements, but those are, those could take years.
It's, i- i- and this will take years because it's after the, it's after the issuance of the first building permit, so that won't happen. It'll hap- years from now, probably two, three, maybe four, up to four.
But they're, they're required to do within sixty days, so they've gotta work backwards on that and start negotiating in advance of that so they can have it recorded no later than sixty days.
We, we would enter into the negotiations with the congregation, if this development agreement is approved, we would begin negotiations for a conservation easement, once this development agreement is approved. So we would have, I suspect we would have that conservation easement in place well before this deadline. And so that, 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 the conservation easement contemplated there is for the hillside retreat center and then below it is the uh, uh, retreat center, oh, sorry, the, the hillside open space and then below it is for the retreat center open space. Developer must complete the construction of off-site improvements again prior to the eleventh building permit being issued. Developer must provide a mechanism for funding the maintenance of certain uh, public improvements prior to the dedication of the public park. And the public park is dedicated uh, upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the twenty-second single-family residential unit.
On the completion of the Carter improvement, um, prior to the eleventh building permit being pulled. Now, by the time the eleventh building permit is pulled, would we, how many of the prior ten, you know, properties uh, would be issued a certificate of occupancy? I, I'm just wondering how, how many houses there might be before there's the second point of ingress and egress?
Potentially all of them. So, so the city council, if we're using these numbers, should contemplate potentially having uh, ten occupied homes.
But, uh, from my recollection, the developer or the applicant mentioned that sunny side would probably be developed first, so some of A, B, and C, but probably that would be a, a trip to go over for that ingress and egress, right?
Oh, you mean, you know, that you're, you're saying that the ten houses would likely be on the west?
On the west side rather than the east side.
Well, there's, there's ten, if I counted, there are ten lots on that west side.
And then the mechanism for funding the maintenance of the improvements, that's the, what was the acronym you were using, the C?
It's, it's a, it's a community facilities district and the advantage of using a community facilities district is that unlike some other districts, it doesn't have to go to the local agency formation commission for approval. The, the city council itself can approve a community facilities district and the funds collected will be a parcel tax on the forty-two homes.
I think we may be, I think we may have exhausted our questions, I'm not sure.
I've exhausted my questions and I am exhausted, so.
And wait to see, wait to continue until uh, Mayor Pro Tim comes back. We need to kinda talk about how to, how to deliberate this, there's so much here.
Mayor, would you like to make the ex-party disclosures at this time?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, well, so if, if members of the council visited the site or had communications with the applicant, uh, now would be the appropriate time to make those disclosures uh, for the record. So if you, if you visited the site, if you could just state that, yes, I visited the site, I've walked the grounds, I, I know it. And if you've had conversations with the applicant and those conversations included material that isn't in this packet, it would, it would also be appropriate to, to make those disclosures at this time.
So, the site visit, we, we did, coordinated by the city, I did visit the site and we did, the applicant was part of the group that gave us a tour of the site.
I also participated in, in a site tour um, with, I think, one other council person and one or two of the planning commissioners. Um, I also participated in one of the Zoom sessions as, as part of the public outreach that um, the applicant, uh, the developer did early on, I believe. Maybe it was during COVID because it was during Zoom. It may actually have been, been before I was actually elected on the city council, but um, in that, in that timeframe and I think the materials were, you know, early stages of what we've been presented.
So I um, attended the, the Zoom on, I think it was August fifth of twenty twenty, but that was before the election. There was also one of the sessions, I think that was also before election, that was at, at the, the band show. They had the experts there, I attended and, and, and read some of the, the things there. Uh, and then I went on one of the tours with uh, some of the, with one or two of the council members and a couple of, of the planning commissioners.
I also went on a tour and visited the site. I did not receive any additional materials.
I stepped out for a second, so we're doing.
We're do- we're doing the ex-party disclosures.
Okay. Yeah, um, uh, one Zoom session. Again, I, I don't, I don't recall if that was um, it was during the twenty twenty election, whether or not it was, I was elected or not. Um, I, I think there was one, one meeting at Memorial Park and then also the um, the site visit. I attended that, I believe with Councilmember Parkerst uh, and Commissioner Dennis, no, Commissioner Dennison and Commissioner Spears.
Can I, I might add, we, we did the site, we all did the site visit as a response to public input that they wanted us to go up and actually physically look at it, which was a great idea.
Thank you.
So here we are, we have a, a lot in front of us and it's getting a tad late, so I'd like to maybe start. Maybe issue by issue, point by point, and see how far we can get. Kind of evaluate this one, one issue at a time.
So we, just a point of clarification, we have two ordinances we have to ultimately approve. Three items of one and two of the other, is that correct?
Well, we, we have one ordinance and one resolution.
Thank you.
Uh, it's my recommendation, because an ordinance requires two readings and a resolution can be approved with only one reading, it's my recommendation that whenever the ordinance is adopted, that the resolution not, not be adopted until the second reading is done on the ordinance. Because an ordinance requires two readings, so to make sure that everything is adopted all at the same time, my recommendation would be that the resolution is adopted when the second reading for the ordinance is done, if that makes sense.
And so the ordinance has this zoning change, zoning map amendment, approval of the specific plan and the development agreement.
Correct. Under, under state law, certain things have to be adopted by ordinance and those are the three items that must be adopted by ordinance. And the remainder only needs to be adopted by resolution.
So the resolutions, the EIR, a mitigation and monitoring reporting program, general plan, use plan map, and approval of lot line adjustments. So I'm, I'm trying to understand the mitigation and monitoring report program, is that in response to, to the EIR? Are those the, okay. Oh, and there's a findings fact, okay.
So we should begin discussing the uh, the resolutions.
The ordinance.
You want, you wanna do the ordinance?
The ordinance, you, what I heard the attorney say is you want to do the resolution at the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
But in what order you consider the items, it's up to you at the planning commission level. Uh, they, uh, do you remember Director Gonzalez, what they considered first at the planning commission? I think it was the EIR and then the specific plan. And the development agreement was last. And the reason the development agreement is last is because through the development agreement, you can make whatever fixes you want that you don't like in the EIR and the specific plan, to the extent they can be fixed in the development agreement.
And we can vote on all eight items separately essentially. Or, or do you have to group, or do you have to approve the resolution and the ordinance?
Right, I, I recommend taking two separate votes, one on the resolution and then one on the ordinance.
But, and then that doesn't, so if we vote on the ordinance, um, it, we, we, we'll say, when we have the first reading, that's a vote on the ordinance, right? it, we, we, well, see, when we have the first reading, that's a vote on the ordinance, right?
Correct. There's, so there'd be two separate votes on the ordinance.
So, so, okay, so that you could then, if you have then the vote on the resolution at the, at a second meeting, then, then you could also amend the specific plan, excuse me, the development agreement, the development agreement because it's part of the ordinance.
Thank, thank you for that question. Let me clarify that. If a vote's going to be taken, if, if, if an ordinance is going to be introduced and read for first reading, then it assumes that there's going to be no substantive edits at the second reading. So if the city council is, is ready to approve, i- if the city council is ready to introduce and have a first reading on the ordinance, it should also at that time be ready to approve the resolution as well.
So, so I, so I'm getting a bit of disconnection here because you said the development agreement is kind of where we can fix everything we don't like in the EIR. And we would do the EIR, and, and it's part of the first vote. And the EIR is part of the second vote. Well, we can't, if we don't like something in the EIR, we can't fix it. We have to fix it with the first vote with the development agreement.
At, at the, at the planning commission, what they did is they, every time they addressed one of these, whether it's development agreement or a specific plan or ER, they took kind of a straw poll among themselves to see, okay, is everyone okay with this one? And then moved on to the next one and the next one and the next one. And then when it came time to actually vote, they voted on all of them at the same time.
I mean, isn't this the difference between consideration and voting? I mean, we can talk about all of these things, right? And, and talk about the, the concerns that we have and any changes that we might want to suggest. But that doesn't implicate a vote, right? So I mean, I think, I think what you were saying about leaving the discussion of the development agreement for last means that if we have discussion of the other items that then require documentation to implement, that that would probably be where they would be documented. And so it would make sense to have that be last so that we could use it as a implementation vehicle.
Correct.
So I don't think we have to actually formally vote while we discuss, you know, sort of like we do, you know, in other items where we'll talk about it and then, you know, and then put a motion forward.
So, you want to be in the conversation?
I'm going to maybe make a unpopular suggestion. We've asked a lot of, I mean, we did a lot of preparation for tonight. And I feel like, you know, I knew what I needed to ask and I've asked it and I've gotten answers. But I have to be honest that I don't know that I've actually like assimilated all of the answers and all of the information that we've gotten tonight in a, you know, in addition to other people's questions. And I, I frankly like some time to sit down and think what I'd actually want in the way of different things or, or changes or suggestions. And if that's, that's, if that's part of the discussion tonight, I'm not sure I'm prepared for that. I mean, I'm certainly happy to discuss, you know, in general terms, certain things. But I, I certainly don't think I'm prepared to say I'm, you know, going to be able to approve or not approve this based on, you know, these kinds of things that I'd like to see reflected. I don't know if others feel differently, but.
No, I, I, I'm the same way. I, I, I really need to reflect on a, a lot of this. You're sleeping on it would do me a lot of good.
Yeah, I, I feel I, I should, I need to reflect as well, but I don't want to reflect too long because as we've seen, when we've reflected a long time, such as the temporary use permit issues, like we, what, what did we talk about? And, you know, so I, I would, I would recommend that it's not too long. But I, I'm with you there that I'm, I need to assimilate some of this. Maybe follow up questions with staff or community members and things before, before I'm ready.
That's three of us. So I guess we, that, that decides it.
I, I was, I was just going to share that. There's parts of the, of the resolution that, you know, tonight I could probably say, I think I'm okay with this. I think I'm okay with that mitigation monitoring reporting program. But I think there's pieces of the EIR and the SEQA findings that I, I, I want to make sure that I am digging a little deeper to it. And if there are additional questions or discussion, that we should have those. With respect to the ordinance, you know, everything in the ordinance, I, I agree with, with my colleagues. There's, there's so much in all of those three pieces that need to be deliberated longer, absorbed and understood a bit more. And I, I'm with like mind that I don't think we could, I'm prepared to make a decision tonight. And I also want to share that my next, the next time I can meet with this city council is not until the first meeting in October. But I don't want that to hold up the, the council, the desires to keep the momentum moving. Because it's true, if, if we wait too long, there's much of it that I know that we forget. Or I do. I shouldn't put that on all of you. I apologize.
Mr. City Manager, do, can you give us a roundup of our next scheduled council meeting? I'm guessing that's a pretty full docket. Pretty, I'm sure it's.
Mayor Goss, the September twenty-seventh meeting is a full docket. We do have a lot of items. I think we have three presentations, a host of consent items and a few discussion items.
So you're not going to be here next week, but we could do a special meeting, well, a four-person quorum next week.
You have quorum.
Are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
You all good with that?
Of the September twenty-seventh, you said you've got a packed agenda. What are some of the things that are on that, that twenty-seventh meeting, just so I can wrap my head around?
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers. We have two presentations. One presentation is from Assemblymember Holden, an annual presentation from the YMCA. We also have California State Wildfire Presentation. On the consent calendar, we have the tower, I'm sorry, we have a public hearing for the Tower Point Cell Lease Agreement, Award of Contract for Ground Maintenance, Update on Rules and Regulations, that's Consent. We have a second reading for the TUP. We have Resolution for Area D CERT for Mutual Aid. Potentially, we have the Athens Agreement, that's tentative, Downtown Parking Ordinance, short-term, and then Short-Term Rental, the last three word discussion items.
Really not much at all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, understanding that I would not make a special meeting. But I think given this topic and how important it is, I, I do think it needs a dedicated meeting time as opposed to trying to fit it in as an agenda item for a regular scheduled meeting, in my humble opinion.
Well, and I, I assume that that is partially because, you know, we've been, we, we scheduled this meeting as a special meeting in part to make sure that we didn't have to shoehorn it into a, a, a regular meeting, right?
That is correct. Coming back from a break, we knew that we were going to have quite a full docket for the next few meetings. So we wanted to make sure that this meeting had the attention that it needed.
So we can do a meeting next week, next Tuesday. There's no council meeting next Tuesday. Not real excited about that prospect, but we have to do it. We have to do it.
Today, today's Thursday. Is there enough time to notice, City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia. The, for special meetings, the noticing requirement is twenty-four hours. So we are well in, and within the timeframe.
I, I'd like to give the residents more than twenty-four hours personally, but yeah, that's, yeah, that's technically, that's.
We could do Thursday. That actually might, and it actually is even better for my calendar.
Why are we pushing another planning commission meeting away or they're not, they're not meeting until two weeks from now?
They're not meeting until October sixth.
When's our, when's our regular scheduled meeting?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
We wouldn't be able to have any follow-up that, that day, right? Because there isn't a prescribed number of days between.
There has, there has to be five days between the first reading and the second reading of an ordinance. So if, if the city council were to adopt, were to introduce an ordinance for first reading at their next meeting and they were going to have the second reading at their regular meeting, it could, it could potentially be done on, if the meeting was on a Thursday or a Tuesday.
Oh, either.
Either, five days, five days from, right?
Does, does a second reading need to be on a regular meeting?
The second meeting needs to be on a regular meeting date.
We tend to not deliberate like crazy on a second reading, right? I mean, get, unless something major happens in between the two.
Depends on whether you can count both the day we have the meetings.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's Thursday to Tuesday would be five days, but only if you're able to count both the Thursday and the Tuesday, right? No, I guess, or one of them, I guess.
Tuesday is the, Tuesday is the better day.
Or Wednesday?
I, I.
Or Wednesday.
The, the, the thought I have is that if, assuming for a second that the meeting started at the same time, five-thirty, if, if there was an approval, the approval wouldn't happen until the evening of that, whenever the first reading is going to be. And if you're going to be very strict about it and count exactly five days, twenty-four hours in a day, the second reading would have to happen then exactly at around that time.
Oh, my goodness.
Whenever the second reading happens. So to avoid that situation, it'd probably be safest to have that meeting on, on a Tuesday as opposed to a Thursday. If, if Tuesday or, or Wednesday, one, one of those two days is amenable for the council.
Wednesday's supposed to be the Natural Resources Commission, but I, is that, is the Natural Resources Commission going to happen on the twenty-first?
Not sure.
We are having a couple of issues with the quorum. We were thinking about postponing it one day as a special meeting to get more members at it. But that's also presenting some problems right now. So it's a little bit up in the air until I talk to them all again tomorrow.
I don't know what.
That was for Wednesday?
I, i- if we could do Wednesday, if other people could do Wednesday, that would be better for me than if it's Tuesday. No classes?
Oh, you have your classes.
Tuesday's all I've got, really.
I'll make it work.
Monday? Is that too soon?
Twenty-four hours.
What's Monday?
I don't know. I'm just trying to throw it out there. This is that fun sausage making that we like to do in the meetings.
Yeah, I, I teach on Mondays too.
Oh, okay.
But.
I, I, let's do Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twentieth? Okay. Do we need to vote to extend the public hearing to?
Yes, you'll, you'll, you'll need to vote to extend the public hearing to a date certain and that date being Tuesday twentieth.
So is there a motion to that effect so we can put ourselves out of this misery?
I move to extend the public hearing to a date certain of Tuesday, September twentieth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So that is, that's what we will do.
Oh, I was just going to abstain from that since I won't be present.
Okay. We have an abstention, four to one, Madam City Clerk. Okay, well, that leaves, that ends the agenda. I'd like to see if you guys have any, any suggestions for future agendas. Probably not. Given that we're all full.
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes. Is there a motion?
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, about the adjournment?
Yes.
It's my favorite motion. How can I forget?
I've got to carry all this stuff out and.